We live?
Yes.
Okay, welcome to the Thursday, April 13th, 2017 zoning board meeting. I am overwhelmed with the amount of people we have here. Somebody brought in free chips of popcorn, soft drinks would have helped, but the chips were enough. Thank you. If everyone would please be courteous enough to shut off your cell phones so that we're not interrupted. First thing on the agenda is we have adjournment for Six Smugglers Path. That's appeal number 2017-013. There was no sign posting, so this will be the second adjournment. If there's any further adjournments, louder. Oh. I covered the mic. So if there's any further adjournments, there'll be denials because they'll have to be reposted. So can I have a motion that we adjourn this until April 27th?
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal number 2017-013 be adjourned until April 27th.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mrs. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that is adjourned till April 27th. We have a reserved decision that we would like to announce, Mrs. Seabrook.
Yes, the board has a lengthy written determination denying the application on appeal 2017-005. The board has a copy of it, they're gonna vote on it and adopt it as a part of the vote.
Okay. You wanna move it, don't you? You wanna move it?
I don't have to read it for me.
No, just move. Just move.
Do you do you talk to me appeal?
Yeah.
To deny the appeal in accordance with the determination which is being adopted here with? Well, you had to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the appeal number 2017-005 be denied.
In accordance with the determination?
In accordance with the determination.
We're adopting here with.
We're adopting here with.
Should we move somebody?
Some move.
Mr. Leroy.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that motion has been denied. All right. Next appeal, you wanna read 48 Willow Street?
Yep, we have appeal number 2017-14 for Kenneth Schroeder of 48 Willow Street, Aquabog, for variances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 17, where the proposed front yard setback is 40 feet where the minimum required is 50 feet. The proposed side yard setbacks are 15.9 feet and 21 feet where the minimum required is 25 feet. The proposed combined side yard is 36.9 feet where the minimum required is 55 feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is 41.8 feet where the minimum required is 17.
Salma Swir, tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do, Tracy Rivera, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, hold that mic close to you.
80 Terry Street, Patchogue, New York. I'd like to just hand up some things. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here representing Phoenix Homebuyers LLC for a proposed house on a 75-foot by 140-foot wide property. There has been an application that has already been filed with the Board of Health, and we're on the agenda for the 20th for the Board of Review. Mr. Lyons is doing the application. There's been meetings with the Board of Health, and there seems to be no issues with granting the Board of Health. We do know that the granting of the Board of Health is needed in order to fulfill the obligations of the Building Department to receive a permit. Also, there has been a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC that was issued back in August 25th, 2016. It was also an application before the CAC yesterday. I played a little phone tag with Mr. Greg Bergman to see exactly what the results were. He felt that once we received the letter of non-jurisdiction, that we should be fine. With that being said, we're before the Board this afternoon evening for a front yard setback requesting 40 where 50 is needed. Minimum 15.9 and 21 on side yards where 25 is required. And a total on the side yards of combined 36.9 where 55 is needed. A proposed rear yard of 41.8 where 60 is required. I have two applications that I submitted for you to review, grants that were granted before this board. One is 14 Willow Street, Aquabog. That granting was reopened and held over in... The Board granted on July 23rd, 2015. That lot is substantially smaller than the lot that we have. It's only a 50-foot wide lot. And the requests that they asked for were actually greater than ours. You granted a 39.3 instead of 50 for the front yard where we're asking 40. You granted a rear yard of 41.4 versus, you know, 60 where we're asking for 41.8. Once again, our lot is greater than what you had granted on a 50-foot. You granted 9.6 for side yards where we're asking for 15.9 and 21. And you granted the total at 19.2 where we're asking for 36. So you had already granted something on that block, on a smaller lot, greater reliefs than what requesting. There was also an application that was granted before this board on December 11th, 2014, on a 50-foot wide lot as well, same depth, 150. They asked for a 30-foot front yard, you granted it. You granted a rear yard of 33.4 and granted side yard of 9.5 and a total of 19. With that being said, the application that we're looking for is within harmony of the neighborhood. If you've had the opportunity to familiarize yourself with that area, drive around, you'll see the very small lots. I did get a couple of phone calls. The phone calls I got were in favor of the application. I did get one phone call that with some slight concerns of, you know, the water or the flooding or whatnot. And I assured the person that had called me that there's engineers that get involved, there's, you know, applications that have to be filed, and nothing would be approved unless it was engineer stamped, qualified, and approved. So with that being said, everything that we're requesting is definitely within harmony, not a negative impact, no negative detriments, no environmental safety issues. And I'm hoping that granting of this application will take place. I will address any questions at this time.
Thank you, you guys got it. Is there anyone else I wanna... You go ahead.
I wanna ask you, how far is the retaining wall gonna be?
I'll look at the survey. Dun dun dun. I'm sorry.
Top of the wall's gonna be at eight feet from ground level. So you're calling it elevation eight?
Correct.
But from actual ground level?
Oh, it's gonna be about four and a half, five.
Okay, that's what I really wanted to know.
Yes, absolutely.
And we have another similar case like this tonight for a fence.
Okay.
Do you plan on putting any kind of barrier around that four-foot wall?
You mean where it's above the ground?
Above the ground, yes.
We're gonna put a fencing around that hole so it's...
Well, you may...
Don't fall off and hurt themselves.
If by any chance we do grant this, you may need a variance for that fence. So, and there might be a chance that we might put this off for another meeting, I'm not sure yet. Depends on what else is going on. Because there are concerns with the immediate neighbor, and we always like to hear what they have to say. And of course, we have something in writing from them, but they said they may not be able to appear tonight.
That may have been the...
But I'm not sure, but we'll see where that goes. But I would recommend, if you're gonna do that, and if you're not pressed for time...
Well, we kinda are.
Well, okay, then maybe amend your application or...
Okay.
Reapply it another time.
Um, can we amend the application right now, or, I mean, have...
No.
No. Okay, so then can we put in a second application for the fencing and...
You could.
Okay.
You could.
That wall, though, is just for the septic system, right? You have to raise that up.
Yes, that's just for sanitary, correct.
Right.
So before the CO would be issued, before a CO would be issued, that would be taken care of. So even if, you know, the Board granted that this evening, that would be a separate issue that we would...
Well, there are many ways to go around that, or I should say approach it legally. Not around it, but...
I understand.
And you may wanna consider consulting.
I just assumed it was part of the Building Department's responsibility for that, not part of...
Well, but we have a similar case that they're pushing it back to us for that reason, because they...
Is that the one that's gonna be at 11 Willow?
Uh, not...
Tonight as well?
No, I don't believe so.
Mr. Barnes? Salma Swir, this guy, would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
Salma Swir, tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. I do. Ken Schroeder's one. State your name and address, please. Ken Schroeder, 75 Broadway, Mastick Mill. Thank you. And Phoenix Homebuyers, part owner.
He's part owner of Phoenix Homebuyers, who I...
Is that a modular...
That's what we're putting up, yes.
You are putting a modular? Is there a chance we can see the plans on there?
I believe I have a set.
Yeah, there is.
You can see by the plans, it's a modest home. How high are the ceilings?
They're only eight feet, right?
Eight feet.
If I waited to the third page, I would've figured it out.
(laughing).
It's a standard two-story, it's just that because the lot is thin, we had to go with a more of a slim one type.
Someone threw railroad flat like the old days, huh? I just wanted to see elevations, actually. Anybody want to see the elevations on the town?
Yeah, sure. You good with the elevations?
Yes.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you. Is there anyone else to be heard on this matter? Come forward, please. Please raise your right hand. Do you Salma Swir, tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help God?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Salvato Curatolo, 513 Pecanic Bay Boulevard. I'm... My property is right adjacent to the property you're discussing. And I've had, over the last several years, an increased flooding problem with some new structures that were built just south of May, between my backyard and the bay. This property that we're discussing is now immediately to my west. And my objection to the variance would be that anything that takes away additional permeable surfaces is gonna create a larger problem for me. A problem that has been exasperated over the last few years with that additional building that's been going on. So I am here in opposition to a building that's larger, what I believe to be larger than what is normally permitted by the town code.
So you're adjacent to the west?
Right, yeah, there's a driveway, we'll call it a driveway, that goes right next to my property and goes right down to the bay. There's a home that's down there. The property that we're discussing is right on the other side of that driveway. It's about 30 feet, 40 feet from my property.
So does your right-of-way, so do you live on the bay and your right-of-way goes all the way up to the boulevard?
Excuse me, there is a right-of-way from Pecanic Bay Boulevard to a house that is on the bay. That is not my house, my house is right on Pecanic Bay Boulevard, so it passes my house on the west. It's, I'm right between Wolowski Way and this driveway. I guess Wolowski Way, everybody seems to know that.
Yes, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come right up. Are you, are you waiting to speak, ma'am?
No.
No? Okay, I'm sorry. Put my glasses on. Please raise your right hand. Do you Salma Swir, tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
So help God?
Yes.
Please state your name and addresses, both of you.
Leonard Graezik, 46 Willow Street. I'm immediately west of the proposed building. So it would affect me greatly having the structure next to me. Now, as I understand it, and in reading some of the zoning laws, usually variances are granted on hardships. And I don't see what hardship is presented by the lot in that it is a conforming lot. The argument by the applicant that there were variances granted to the other people on the block, but they had 50-foot wide lots. This lot is 75, so it's another 50% wider than the other lots. And if one plans to build, I firmly believe they should build within the confines of the lot as regulated by the town's building codes. And that I don't care to have a large structure. From what I understand, it's going to be 2,200 feet. And again, I feel that it's really going to be out of place. And I don't need it four feet closer to my property. That's how I feel.
You don't need what, sir?
I don't need that structure four feet closer to my property line. Because that's the variance. I am immediately west of that.
So you're the next, the next actual property to the left?
I'm 46 Willow, I'm right next door to them, that is correct.
Just out of curiosity, what are the setbacks in your house?
I couldn't tell you right offhand, it was built by my parents, probably back in 1957. But it's the same lot, all the lots were sold by George Ortonry. They were all 75 by 100, at least the ones where we are. And all of the houses were built around the same time, that out end of the block. And that lot was owned by my uncle, who owned the house across the street.
How wide is your property?
It's the same, 75 by the 140.
And how wide is your house?
30 feet, I would guess.
So it's about 20 feet on each side?
Probably around that, maybe a little bit more, yes.
So this gentleman's asking for 15.9 feet on one side and 21 feet on the other side. Is that greatly different than what you have right now?
I would think with the size of the house, two-story house, yes. I would say it would really be an obstruction, yes.
Well, the two-story part has really nothing to do with it. It's the footprint of the house.
Right.
Right? So is it greatly, is it greatly different than what you have now as far as setbacks is concerned?
You know, I would think it is, but I haven't measured. I couldn't tell you right offhand. We just got back from vacation, and I haven't been out there. But I couldn't tell you, but I could go and measure, and then I could tell you how far the setback. So as I said, my parents built it back in 1957.
Right.
So, you know...
Well, I'm just going by what you gave me, 75-feet-wide property?
Yes.
30-foot-wide house leaves you with 45 feet?
It may be 25 feet, I'm not sure that...
So that leaves you with approximately, I don't know where your house is situated?
It's in the middle of the lot, basically.
Oh, so you're looking at about, you're looking at about 20 feet on each side?
Perhaps a little bit more.
Right, so this gentleman that's appealing, Mr. Schroeder, is the same, 21 feet on one side and 15.9 feet on the other side, which is only slightly different.
But I don't understand his hardship. What is the hardship that he's requesting a variance in that the lot has regulations now in 2017, vastly different than what they were in 1957, if there were any at all, back then? And I'm sure there were none, but at this point, there is. And it's a conforming lot. I don't see any hardship presented at all from the applicant. My father-in-law used to be the zoning chairman over in Southampton, and he advised me of a number of things, including that most of the times there needs to be a hardship. There's no hardship at all, I heard, in his applicant's proposal, none. It's just that he wants to build his McMansion, and he needs more space to do it.
Well, I wouldn't call it a McMansion, sir, in all honesty, in all fairness. I wouldn't call it a McMansion if you have something very similar.
He has 2,200 feet, I probably have 1,100 feet.
Yeah, but we're talking about setbacks now.
Okay, but...
Well, I don't wanna stand to correct you, but I have to say that this lot is not conforming. It doesn't conform to any of the setback standards that were adopted in 2004 and still continue today. And the town board has never done a non-conforming lot schedule, which a lot of these wouldn't even be here in front of us. But this is a similar lot to the others on the block. And I'm not trying to defend anybody or whatever. I'm just trying to say this is how these small lots evolve over a period of time and how the town has to deal with them. And they usually wind up on our laps. What's in front of us, again, is what the setbacks are, not as to the size of the house.
Okay, understood.
So I can understand your concern that it could be a very high-looking, massive, overbearing structure right next to you. But it has to be elevated for the septic system. They have to build a retaining wall around it. And they are leaving 21 feet on the side of you, which I would consider that a gift in a certain way, but... And then, and then, of course, to their east is there, there's a driveway there, which I don't think any of that could ever be built on. So it isn't single and separate ownership, because that's what has proved out so far that I'm aware of. I have, I've never done a single and separate title search on this particular lot. But they do have rights to build a house.
I'm not denying their right to build a house.
Okay.
All I'm asking is that they conform to what the building code is. I'm not saying they can't build, they purchased it with the intent to build.
Zoning code and a building code. They can't conform, that's why they're here to us. They're asking for a variance from the zoning code.
But why can't they conform? That would be my question, what's the hardship?
It's impossible. It's impossible because the setbacks are tremendously required and are much larger than these non-conforming lots. When they did zoning in the town in 2004, it was the idea of two-acre zoning. None of these could let non-conforming lots have setbacks deep enough to build a house. That's why this is an old lot. It's been in single and separate ownership. It was owned by the neighbor, and they had to say, "Name would be merged, and we wouldn't be here today." So the town board and the legislature of our town decided that they didn't wanna do a non-conforming schedule to deal with these small lots. And that's why we're here to them. I can't see any other way to deal with it at the moment legally. You know, I can't say to them, "Please put a 1,000-square-foot housing." I think that zoning code in that town and that section of town requires 1,200 square feet minimum. So, then they're asking for like 800 more square feet.
If you went by the code, I believe the rear setback would be 60 and the front would be 50. So if you conformed to that, you'd have, you know, hardly anything. So...
Can I say something?
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Did I, am I saying it now?
Yes, you're smart.
Yes.
I'm Barbara Graezik, Len's wife. No mention has been made about the neighborhood at all. These are little bungalows, they always were, you know, the lots were small for that reason, okay? The house that was built at 14, I think that's the address that they mentioned, that was a similar house to what they wanna build. Well, the other one was a little bigger. If you looked at, I don't know if any of you have looked at it since it's been built? You have?
Yeah.
Okay, and you see how it's, it looks like it's...
Yes, I'm aware of it.
It's very huge. It doesn't seem to fit in with the neighborhood at all.
There's about 10 houses in there that don't conform to the old neighborhood, but they were all built prior to zoning, or most of them were.
And it seems like you people up there wanna allow this to continue on, so it's gonna end up looking like Queens, where you're, you know, the houses are like 10 feet away from each other. Besides which, the flooding hasn't been addressed. I know Charlie Dixon, Dixon, who lives across the street from us, or from the lot, has submitted pictures of flooding on that property. And I think that should be considered in the variance, that it's gonna be especially worse, as this other gentleman who was up here before had mentioned, Sal.
Oh, I understand.
And that's a hardship for us. We have our burner beneath the house, and we get flooding. We have had to replace it a number of times. We have a sump pump in there, we do the best we can. We can't raise our property up because our house exists already. They have that option of bringing everything up. And I, God, I don't even wanna think of the septic system. I really don't.
No, I wouldn't either.
And, you know, I'm talking as a human being, a neighbor who lives in this area. I was raised in Waterville on the South Shore all my life. I left the South Shore because I can't stand it anymore. And the North Shore is turning into the South Shore. I love the neighborhood, it's a dead-end area, it's, it needs to stay like that. And you don't...
Ma'am, we're human beings too, in all fairness. And you're, you know, what's before us is a setback issue. That's it, a setback issue. And it's not much different than what you have right next door. So that's what we're looking at.
It's unfortunate, but I, it's something that the legislature, which is our town board in this town that deals with zoning, they need to address that issue throughout the town. There are all these substandard lots that exist in our communities, all throughout Riverhead Town, Aquabog, Jamesport, South Jamesport, Northville, St. Louis, Waiting River, Creek Road. Everywhere you go, we have tremendous amount of undersized, non-conforming lots.
What's gonna happen?
The legislature needs to deal with it. We only give a variance for a setback or a use variance. That's pretty much it. The other things that you're concerned about flooding, that's strictly up to the Building Department and the engineers who design these types of structures. They have to be able to control the water runoff onto the block and onto adjoining parcels.
Because after Sandy, we lost all the trees on that side of the property. So, a lot of people put up fences. Well, fences don't do anything with flooding. So we planted, planted a private hedge, which hopefully will take some of the moisture back because, you know, it absorbs it. And building a house that's gonna take away from the ground absorbing this water, it's, the bigger the worse, you know?
The reality is, they can build a house.
I understand that, and so does my...
They're gonna build a house. So you have to decide what's acceptable. Is it totally unacceptable what they're asking for?
Is it necessary what they're asking for? Is it necessary?
The setbacks. Yes, it is necessary because it doesn't conform to any of today's setback standards.
Does it have to be as drastic as what they're asking for? Is there a certain amount that could be...
So, let's look at the survey, 40 feet from the front yard to the structure. The zoning code, I think, requires 50 feet.
50, that's correct.
So, if we move the house back 10 feet, that would change your feelings? No, it wouldn't. It would conform to the front yard setback, but by the time you push the house back, then all of a sudden, you're not in compliance with the rear yard. So then the house has to come forward. Do you understand the problem that...
They're not in compliance with the rear as it stands now, and they're looking for a variance on the rear as well.
I understand that.
And they're looking for a major variance on the east side of the house and a four-foot variance on the west side of the house.
I'm not trying to turn this into an argument.
No, 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 I'm not either.
It's zoning 101.
We just want you to consider all this.
Of course we're gonna consider it, absolutely gonna consider it. And I'm not, you know, we have to protect people's property rights, just like you. You own a lot. You never know, someday you may need to sell it, and somebody comes along and says, "I'll give you a million for it." If I can get a two-story, three-story...
No one's buying that lot, so I don't know.
But I'm just trying to be honest in what the zoning code is and trying to get you to understand that something's gonna happen there no matter what.
Well, we understand that if you have a perfect light to build.
10 feet this way, 10 feet to that way, where are we going with all this? What are we gonna argue about for the rest of the night? That's all I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to say, you know, you're defeated, go home, no. No, I'm not saying that. We're gonna take a lot of these issues under consideration when we make a determination. That's all, I'm just trying to educate, that's all.
That's fine, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard?
I'll make it quick because you have a really big, full house tonight. I've been an expediter for 15 years, and you hear hearings and, you know, and you put these notices up so the public can come out and speak, and they have the right to speak. But once again, we'll be for the Board for zoning...
But once again, we'll be for the board for zoning setbacks only. If nobody needed a zoning setback, you guys wouldn't be sitting up there tonight and this would be an empty room. So, you know, what we're looking for is way more than conforming. I mean, if you drove up and down that little neighborhood, there's houses that are on the property line. We have houses that are two and a half story. I looked at one house, it looked like three story, and I said, "I wonder how much the sprinkler system costs in that house." So, unfortunately, their house is one of the smaller houses that are still in the area. And they must feel that they're being, you know, bombarded by larger homes, but we're not looking for anything... I can't blame them, but we're not looking for anything that isn't already there. We're actually still going to be one of the smaller homes in the area. What we're proposing, they said their house is thirty feet wide, we're proposing twenty-seven point five. We're proposing a narrower house than what they have, you know? And as for McMansion, we're not doing a McMansion, you know? That's it. And keep in mind, this property was up for sale, which means either one of these, you know, people that came up here this evening to make their comments could have bought the property. And then nobody would have been building on it. But they didn't. Someone else did. And it's single and separate and it has building rights. And we're here for some zoning setbacks that you guys have already granted before.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Short is going to address the...
I just with the flooding stuff like that, we were already going to be putting in a whole bunch of dry wells, not dry wells, but catch basins is the plan to put in there afterwards, because we looked at it too. The prob, that driveway that comes down between the property, between us and Sal's house, that is actually not even in ease, that's an actual, I went to Board of Health today and they actually brought up the whole plan, nineteen eighty-one, when they redrawed. He actually owns the whole lot plus two more lots down below and they connected all of them together. So, that's actually part of his property. It's also burned up very hot. So, what ends up happening is the water has no place really to go. And that's what they're having, their problem is, is that because the water's pushing up, there's no place for the water to go anywhere because the burn of that driveway is so high that the water doesn't even come over the top of it at any point. Yes, we're going to address the flooding and all that kind of stuff because the neighborhood always floods. No matter what rain happens, the whole neighborhood gets flooded. Currently, right now, still part of the neighborhood is underwater. But the thing is, is that we're going to put something with catch basins the best we can in places where we're not going to have that issue. Yes, the water level is only a foot and a half down. There's a problem with that and, you know, we're going to deal with that part of the engineering part of it.
We still have to get a pool, we still have to finish up the process with the Board of Health. We're only here for zoning setbacks, so, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to speak back there, ma'am?
Me?
No, she's my partner.
Oh, okay.
No, I was just, I, you know...
That's all right.
We have to be sworn in.
All right, what do you guys...
Any other questions before we say goodnight?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that appeal seventeen fourteen. Be adjourned. I mean, the hearing closed, and move for reserve decision.
On April twenty-seventh?
Sir.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
Ms. Seabird?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, we will have a reserve decision on April twenty-seventh on this appeal.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Molly, you want to read the next one?
Yes. Okay, we have an appeal number two thousand seventeen dash zero one five for Karen Caputo of forty-nine Dunleavy Lane, South Jamesport, for variances to and/or relief from the provisions of chapter three zero one, section fifteen A two, where the fence exists atop a retaining wall slash retained earth, which represents the fence exceeding a height of four feet in the front yard where a maximum of four feet is permitted.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Solomon Swerfield, truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Steve Labretto, one one zero six five Sound Avenue, Matituck, New York.
Please tell us what you're seeking from the board.
I'm here as an agent for the applicant. And as you know, there was a fence built atop the retaining wall. The retaining wall, similar to the situation you were just discussing, was required by the Department of Health for the septic system. Ms. Caputo had the fence installed as part of the construction for the purposes of basically containing people on her yard, safety. She has dogs and grandchildren. Rather than putting up some evergreens or planting something that would take away the view that was provided by removing vegetation that was there, she chose to put a fence up to be able to have that containment and protection. So, we're seeking variance and we ask for you to grant the variance to allow the fence to stay at a height of, it's approximately seven point six feet above the center line of the road. It happens to be four feet above the grade. The grade was brought up because of the Department of Health requirement, so...
It's noted in your paperwork that the Health Department did require that to be lifted up to accommodate the septic system.
Correct.
Does anyone have any other questions?
It's, he was required to raise the property?
Yes.
So, I do not have any questions.
I would hope the safety issues you'd want it protected.
I'm sorry?
I think the safety issues you'd want it protected.
Yeah, she has young grandchildren as well as pets and she just wants to be able to contain them on the property and...
I don't have a problem.
No problem. Anyone else to be heard on this matter? Yes.
I want to give you something to...
Oh, okay, sure.
I'm in the picture, so you see I'm five foot eight.
We need to address that.
You have to go up to the mic. Please raise your right hand. Solomon Swerfield, tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I don't.
Please state your name and pull the mic down a little bit, would you? Please state your name and address.
My name is Hannah Loatotsas. I live on one fifty Second Street in South Jamesport. I am here to read a letter written by Mr. and Mrs. Ruffrano, who cannot be here tonight. And I am their neighbor. They asked me to read this letter to you. It's in regards to the fence. Two years ago, we expressed concern to this board that the house proposed for this parcel was so large as to be out of character with the neighborhood and visually obtrusive blocking view of the bay for well over half the length of a football field. We write today because the owners erected that structure as allowed by this board and then proceeded without permit or approval to erect a four-foot yard fence running the full width of their property. The worst aspect of this improper construction is that they erected it on top of a four-foot retaining wall, effectively making it an eight-foot-high barrier. As the town has made clear, see attached correspondence in parentheses, measuring from the top of the wall is unambiguously not allowed. The installed fence is illegal. We recognize the valid concern for the safety of children playing near the top of the retaining wall. And note that other members of our community with similar walls have successfully remedied the safety risk without installing fencing. Please note that our homeowner association, of which the owner is a member, hereby offers to work with the owner and suggest alternative means of accomplishing their objective. See addendum note attached. The focus of the entire community is naturally on the bay. The petitioning homeowner does not look at the offending fence, but it's everyone else's, I cannot see very well here, the lighting is not very good, but it's everyone else's sightliness. Please don't reward an applicant who ignored the permitting process and now seeks after the fact forgiveness. Please suggest that the owners instead work with the community to find a mutual acceptable solution. In the event that this board decides to grant a variance for fencing on top of the retaining wall, even if a lesser height, please condition that permission in efforts to visually mitigate the north side of the concrete wall with shrubs or other greenery that will reach but not exceed the top of the permitting fencing. Thank you for your consideration. Signed by Mary Ann Ruffrano and Michael Ruffrano, one forty-five Second Street, South Jamesport, New York.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ma'am, I just have a question for you.
Yes?
Where is that in relation to this property here?
What property?
The property that's, that they're seeking appeal on.
It's across from us.
It's across from you?
Yes.
Across the street from you?
In between the two properties is Dunleavy Lane.
You're like lot eleven, twelve, or thirteen, is that it?
We are the last house on Second Street or Dunleavy Lane.
Okay, lot twenty-five.
One fifty.
You are aware that they were required by the Health Department to raise the property for the septic system?
I understand. But then there is a fence on top of that, four foot high, so which makes the retaining wall plus the fence eight feet high. And that is what my neighbor is questioning.
But the grade was raised because of the Health Department requirement?
Yeah, I understand. That is the retaining wall made out of cement.
Which is, as of a direct result of the requirement by the Health Department?
Yes, I understand. But the fencing is not a requirement by the Health Department on top of the concrete wall.
Well, as mentioned earlier, I think the fence is in there for safety reasons. I mean, it's a pretty good drop.
I understand, but we have a neighbor who has a set, about the same height retaining wall and he has low shrubbery, so that if children play there, they cannot get to the edge. It's impossible. It can be done.
I think what we got, we'll go back and look at it.
Yeah, well, I'd like to hear.
You can have a look.
No, we'll, what we'll do is revisit the property. What's the address of the property that you're mentioning with the shrubs? So, we're looking at the...
Um, I don't know.
Is it on the bay?
Yes, it's on Dunleavy Lane. It's the Penas residence.
But it faces the bay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that's what we'll do. We'll revisit the property and we'll adjourn it till...
If you don't find it, we live on one forty-five, uh, one fifty Second Street.
One fifty and the other one.
I'll show it to you. If I'm home, I'll show it to you.
But just keep in mind that the Health Department put upon the homeowner...
Yeah.
I do understand, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you do have children playing in the yard, it's a four-foot drop.
I understand.
Yeah. So, this...
This is Ruffrano's concern, all right? My neighbor. I'm just reading their letter.
Good. Does that submit to...
But I have to tell you, I do not like the concrete wall. It's very ugly to look at. And if one young child gets the idea with graffiti, it will look very lovely in the neighborhood that is no longer the neighborhood that, why we bought our property. It's very sad.
Well, the wall was required by the Health Department. The wall is required by the Health Department. It wasn't a choice by the homeowner.
I understand.
I do hear you, though. We're going to look at it.
Thank you.
But I'd like to look at it from the perspective, I'd like to look at it from all your neighbors and...
Yes.
We'll see if, we'll take a look.
It used to be very natural, very beautiful, no longer.
Yep.
May we have a copy of that or you have submitted a copy?
I don't know if Mrs. Ruffrano sent you a week, they are out of town.
Two questions for you.
But you can have this.
One suggestion. Would you get in touch with this homeowners association and see what you could work out?
I actually did meet with them just this past Saturday.
Okay.
And really, the concern based on the meeting and an email that I'll read to you from the Ruffranos is more so of an aesthetic, not a height. In fact, I'll just read this very briefly and then I'll summarize in one minute what the meeting was. She sent an email directly to Ms. Caputo, the homeowner, and it says, "I understand that you're working with the building department to obtain a variance." Obviously, the zoning, not the building department. "With the installation of the fence now, it is even more apparent that we hope you will consider the concrete wall again in your landscape finishing plans. With the removal of all the trees that used to be there, we now have a feeling of more open air space and we can enjoy the view much more in and around your home on each side, west and east. We see the bay again. I've heard from others as well with the same good feeling. However, the concrete wall is very hard, cold, long, and linear installation from our side as well as for all of your neighbors when they walk the association path to our private community. It's our hope that you will consider a way to soften the wall up. Some simple vegetation on the front side at the walkway would help. A low growing, possibly an evergreen for all your foliage, preferably a species that doesn't grow tall to take away what's left of the open air space that we are now enjoying. We appreciate your consideration with this discussion." Based on that and the meeting that I had on Saturday, their issue is from an aesthetic point of view, not from a height point of view. Ms. Caputo has agreed to plant ivy and landscape the wall to take away the stark concrete so that they're looking at something more natural and not just the concrete wall, but wishes to get the variance to allow the fence to stay on top. Whether it's plantings or whether it's a fence, the height is still going to be there to offer some sort of protection. With the fence, it's seven point six feet now, it's going to be seven point six feet next year, it's going to be seven point six feet in twenty years. If we put something that's growing there, it has to either be maintained at a certain height or it's going to grow and take away the view that they clearly in January said that they appreciate that they now have by removal of the vegetation. So, the option is either to keep the fence for the protection of the children and the dogs or to plant something that's going to grow and take away the view that they have clearly stated that they enjoy. When I met with them on Saturday, it was virtually the same conversation summarized that I just read the email, that they don't like the concrete, they don't like the concrete wall with the fence on top of it. They would rather have shrubs and foliage and rose bushes. And I understand that, but Ms. Caputo prefers on her property what the fence looks like. And she doesn't feel that the neighbors should decide how they want her property to look. It's not a height issue for them, it's more so an aesthetic issue.
Well, they certainly have a right to complain about it.
Of course, of course.
I would, I would, me personally, I would lean towards at least going out to look at it and seeing what kind of commitment the property owner is willing to do as far as vegetation and what kind of guarantees would the community have that that be done after the variance is granted or before the variance is granted. So, sometimes people need leverage to accomplish what is to be accomplished, so... We'll discuss that in the next meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The home that's seeking the variance is a part of the association?
It is.
So, then they do have some say over each other's use of their property as a member of the association, wouldn't you agree?
Use of the property, yes, but they're wishing for a fairly significant investment be made in beautiful gardens and roses.
I'm just saying that, it's not as clear cut as it's, she doesn't want people to have a say over what happens on her property. Well, you live as, in a part of an association, you live as part of an association.
What she's saying is not that she doesn't want people to have a say, but she wants to do something that's workable for everybody and not...
Well, that's not what you said just a minute ago, but it's okay. I'm not trying to start an argument. I'm just saying that it's not as, you know, she doesn't want people to have a say over what, how she develops her property.
How she vegetates the...
But as a part of an association, there's always that dialogue, really.
Understood.
Will the property owners speak back to the next meeting?
I don't know. What is the date of the next meeting? I can certainly find out.
Well, I would like to at least adjourn it to the twenty-seventh to see if they'll come.
Okay.
Because I would like to have, and in the meantime, you'll be able to go and look at it when the group goes.
Sure.
Revisit the issue.
Sure.
How far off your property line is that wall?
The wall is on the property line.
It's on the property line.
Mm-hmm.
Well, sorry. So, since our chairman had a quick emergency, I'm going to ask somebody to make a motion to adjourn this.
Sure. Is there anybody else that would like to be heard on this matter? Sure. Sir, your name, please?
Hen Totsis.
And you're, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, can you say your name again?
Hen Totsis.
And your address?
One fifty Second Street, South Jamesport.
Okay, thank you.
You just spoke to my wife. Only thing, I'm not so much concerned about the fence or height. I have no problem with it. Only problem I have, if you look at the pictures which I took, you will see on the bottom, there's like black tar on the bottom. Then on the way, and you start on one end, there's a board that's been there almost six months or more. So no one has paid too much attention where I look from, you know, from my house, you know, towards their house. You can look at the pictures, you'll see it. And the wall doesn't look any way attractive. And I don't know if it's up to you people to do anything about it or not, but I see so many more people take a little bit more care on how the cement walls look like. If you go to my property, you'll see what I did with the wall that I had to put up.
Well, we are going to adjourn it.
Please, please do.
And we're gonna go visit the site again.
Yeah.
And we're gonna try to see it from your perspective.
I put on field stone, not for me, but for my neighbors and their neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Anyone else like to be heard? When's the next meeting?
April twenty-seventh. We'll make a revisit adjourn until April...
Twenty-seventh.
I wish, I wish to adjourn appeal number seventeen dash fifteen to the next meeting, April twenty-seventh.
This is Wilton, then?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we adjourn until April twenty-seventh, and we'll take another visit in the next two weeks, take a look at it. Thank you.
Yeah?
Okay, next we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash eighteen for Riverhead PGC LLC of six fifty-five dash eight fifteen, Old Country Road, Riverhead, for variances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter three zero one, Section one ten C one, proposing to construct a restaurant with a drive-through window where a drive-through is not permitted. Chapter three zero one, Section one eleven A, proposing to construct a movie theater building with a height of sixty feet where the maximum permitted is thirty-five feet. Chapter three zero one, Section two thirty-one A, proposing one thousand twenty-one off-street parking stalls where one thousand ninety are required by the existing and proposed development. Chapter three zero one, Section two thirty-one A, where the proposed movie theater building will have one loading berth where a minimum of three is required. And Chapter three zero one, Section two thirty-one A, where the proposed exterior lighting poles are twenty-five feet in height where the maximum permitted is sixteen feet.
Good evening.
Mr. Cuddy, how are you?
Fine, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come.
Mrs. Towns would like to say something.
Just before you start, the public notice indicates that you're looking for the drive-through window and the restaurant. That's no longer part of the application, correct?
There are two matters that will not be heard, yes.
Okay.
One is that because the, that can be taken care of by a special permit through the town board, and the shared parking is to be resolved by the planning board.
Okay.
So those matters will not be on.
Shared parking.
What about the stereo light poles?
I'll make a statement on that, but that's true. We also will not really be addressing that completely because of information that's come to us. Basically, we're going to be addressing, so everybody's aware of the height and the question of the loading berth. Those are the two things that are here. My name is Charles Cuddy. I have an office at four four five Griffin Avenue, and I represent the applicant, which is PGC, the owner of this site. The site, by the way, is the old Walmart site, Riverhead Plaza. With me tonight is William Kugelman. He's the Director of Development Construction for Phillips International, the managing agent for that site. Also Andrew Abraham, who's the Director of Sales and Leasing for the managing agent. Todd Evans, who's the architect from Create Architecture, who's done a number of architectural works in Riverhead. Robert Greenstone, he's the Principal of Greenstone Retailing Leasing. He's a real estate broker for Regal Cinema and a broker for the landlord leasing the remaining vacant retail space. In addition, Courtney Riley is here. She's prepared the site plan, split up some of those designs that are on easels here. She's the Director of Land Development for VHB Engineering. And also Pat Lenahan is here. He's a traffic engineer at VHB Engineering. We're here tonight to address the issues arising from the redevelopment and facelift where Riverhead Plaza, the former site of Walmart. And as I indicated to you, there are two matters that won't be heard, but of particular significance is the new movie theater, and that's what we're here really to address in the height question. PGC, the owner is committed to bringing a first-class theater to Riverhead. It's gonna have ten screens, it's gonna have fourteen hundred ninety seats. The owner, PGC, is working with Regal Cinema to develop the theater. It's located in the building that was the old Walmart building, but that building is gonna be removed. That building consists of seventy-one thousand square feet. It will now be reduced to fifty-seven thousand square feet, so it will be a smaller building. But in order to have a stadium-type seating and the significantly high ceiling that's needed in this theater, the building facing Route fifty-eight will be sixty feet high. The rear of the theater will be fifty-five feet high. The present building, the one that's being removed, is forty-nine feet from the property line. The theater that will be built will be an additional fifty feet from the property line or a total of a hundred and nine feet from the rear line. On the east side, near Oliver Street, the setback will increase from thirty-eight feet now to seventy-one feet. The height increase may be considered substantial, but Riverhead now has adopted downtown, in particular, a district where you have sixty feet high buildings in the DC one district. There are a number of buildings that have been built in Riverhead in recent years that are over fifty feet and are close to sixty feet. So this isn't such an unusual height. But to make the movie visual experience worthwhile, it's necessary to have the additional height. The alternative of a less spacious building would not be desirable to be in. I believe it's gonna have a minimum effect upon the environment and that the community is gonna benefit from having a movie theater that we've sort of looked for for the last twenty years. There's an incidental question that comes up as to the loading berths for the theater. Because of the size of the building, which is more than forty thousand square feet, the code requires that there be three loading berths. Language of the town code at Section two thirty-two addresses buildings used for business, industrial, or hospital purposes. The building inspector did not believe that this addressed the movie theater, but believed also that this board should make a determination as to the number of loading berths. We believe based upon the minimal deliveries that will be made, that one loading berth is sufficient for a movie theater. I want to stress that the owner and the applicant and its managing agent are committed to bringing a movie theater to Riverhead. That's why they've assembled all the people that have come tonight and are here and can certainly answer questions. But in order to move forward, we absolutely need the variance, and we ask that you approve that as well as the one loading berth. I would like Courtney Riley, who is here, VHB, to further address some of the elements of the site plan and as they affect the variance that we requested.
Hey, Ms. Riley, raise your right hand. Do you swear to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you out.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your name and your address, and pull that mic down low.
Sure. My name is Courtney Riley. I'm from VHB Engineering, located at one hundred Motor Parkway, Suite one thirty-five, Hopg, New York. So, tonight, the project includes a movie theater and two restaurants. And what you can see, and I put a board up there, so hopefully the public can see everything as well, and if we need to shift around the boards, we can, so everyone can see what we've proposed here. Because we've really taken this site, and what we're trying to do, as Charles said, is really upgrade it. The project includes taking, demolishing of seventy-one thousand, approximately seventy-one thousand square feet portion of the existing retail shopping center. So that is, if you know the site, there's an existing smaller building, it's about fourteen thousand square feet to the east. We're removing that. And then we're removing a portion of the old Walmart. And that totals the seventy-one thousand square feet. We're also proposing two restaurants. The first restaurant is gonna be approximately seventy-five hundred square feet with two hundred and twenty seats. And the other one is two thousand six hundred square feet with a hundred and twenty-five seats and a drive-through. The proposed project would result in a net increase of seventy-five parking spaces. Such a total would be one thousand and twenty-one spaces would be divided over these existing nine hundred and forty-six. So where these restaurants are going is an existing parking lot. There's no development there. So you're asking, how did we increase parking? What we did is we actually, the movie theater is actually smaller than the building and the Walmart space that was there before. And I'll talk about how we've moved the building away from the residences to, from the south, and also away from the residences to the east. And what we've done is we've tried to compact the movie theater away more from the residences than exists today. We also have added some land bank spaces. These land bank spaces are on the west side, behind the existing. These would only be used if needed. Land bank means that they're not built, and only if the Building Department sees that they need to be built, they would be built. We also increased overall the landscaping. So when you look at the site right now, the impervious area of the total site is over ninety-one percent. We've gone down to eighty-seven percent. And we've done this by actually taking the throat that comes into the site and reducing that drive aisle and adding landscaping not only there, but across all the end capped islands that are all right now impervious. Vehicular access would remain the same. So we have the signalized driveway from Old Country Road, the two unsignalized access off of Old Country Road, as well as the access drives from Ostrander Avenue and Oliver Street. So no changes to site access are proposed. What we did add is pedestrian access. So right now, off Ostrander, when we went to the site, we noticed that there seemed to be a pathway that led from Ostrander into the site. And when we looked at it further, there's actually a bus stop that's located in front of Gala Foods Market. And what we've done is we've added that pedestrian access, so now people aren't walking across lawns, that they have a safe access, and increased also pedestrian access by adding additional crosswalks, not only at that location, but also in front of the movie theater. So tonight, we're asking for relief. While we don't have the drive-through, I'll go into a little bit about it. The reduction of loading bays from three to one, and the building height, which is a thirty-five foot minimum, and we're proposing sixty feet. So just a little bit about the drive-through. Again, it's a twenty-foot lane, and what we've done is for a drive-through and a bypass. This will be clearly identified via pavement markings. The drive-through lane will allow eleven cars, and we've also separated this from the parking lot. Right now, typically, a lot of drive-throughs will actually go through a parking lot area. What we've done is we segregated this and also allowed for a separate access to actually also not impede upon the parking lot. The loading bays. So you have the loading bays for the movie theater. The two restaurants do not require any loading bays per town code. So those are in compliance. What does require a loading bay is the movie theater. And based solely on the code, over forty thousand square feet requires three loading bays. We are proposing one. The code again says that the loading bay, a loading bay is considered to be fourteen feet wide and twelve feet long. What we are proposing is actually ranges from fourteen to twenty feet wide and eighty feet long. Now, we'd have to, excuse me. So right now, the movie theater would only technically have box trucks and things. They would not require a sixty-seven foot tractor trailer. We have provided enough room if that is needed. But Regal has said that they do not at this time. It should be known, and let's talk about the existing building. Again, the existing building was forty-nine feet, point nine feet from the south property line. The new proposed building is now a hundred and nine point four feet from the property line. On the east side, the existing building was thirty-eight point five feet, and the proposed is now seventy feet from the property line. Again, bringing the movie theater as close in to the development and further away from the residences. Loading operations would be similar today, the way that the site operates, where all the loading is in the rear. There is existing vegetation, so there's white pines that actually surround the entire property. One of the things that we did is we wanted to make sure, and we created models, and I'll put those up next, we wanted to make sure that we got the models right. So what we did at VHB, we asked our survey team to go out there and not only survey what was there, but survey the tree heights, survey the existing roadway elevations, Oliver Street, King's Drive, to make sure that when we did our models, that when we were modeling this building, that we are actually perceiving what's going to be there. The existing vegetation, again, is white pines. It goes around the property. There is also an eight-foot wood stockade fence currently on that south and east side. None of the trucks would sit overnight, and the two additional loading docks that you'll see actually on the west side will be for the remaining retail space. So we talked about how we're taking a portion of that Walmart space. There's about thirty thousand square, thirty thousand square feet that's gonna remain, and those two loading docks would be for that, and that is per code. Okay, so the building height. The required building height, again, is thirty-five feet. Both restaurants will be below the required height. The movie theater, as Charles stated, the highest elevation that we have is sixty feet, and that's in the front of the movie theater. On the south side, and on the east side, it'll be around fifty-five feet. We propose these photosimilations on the movie theater and the restaurants. So let me talk about the views. I'm just gonna take, pull them up. So we create a key map here. So just to kind of go through everything, here's our drive-through restaurant. Here's our seventy-six thousand square foot restaurant, and here's our movie theater. We've taken six views. The views we started off was from the court of King's Drive. We took one from Oliver Street, and then three from Old Country Road, and then one from the existing side. So going to view number one, again, we surveyed the elevation of this actual, there's a cul-de-sac right here. The existing building is approximately about two hundred and ninety-four feet. The proposed building is at three hundred and eighty-three feet. All right, so what we did is we actually took the existing photo, and then we transposed, we modeled again all the buildings, and we transposed that model and put it into that existing photo. These were taken April sixth, so just very recently. I'd still consider this the winter vegetation. As you can see, a lot of vegetation hasn't grown. Again, you have the white pines that are existing, and these are evergreen in nature, so they'll remain this way in the winter, and if there's any of these trees that would get fuller in any summer months. So what you could barely see is our movie theater here, and that's from that court. And this is the backside of the building, again, approximately fifty-five feet in height. Again, the second view is from Oliver. What we tried to do is we tried to take the most open space in between some of the houses, so we weren't just looking at houses. And from that, we, you can see the front of the movie theater line here. Again, this is the highest point at sixty feet. Again, this is the highest point at sixty feet. And as you can see, a lot of the existing white pine vegetation is covering at this point.
Is the grade equal to the site that you're showing us from?
So if you'd like, I could go through some of the elevations, I could go back and pull it up. As you can tell from this court, the height actually of the homes sits a little bit higher going to King's Drive. The elevation of this home is about equal to the elevation that the movie theater is going to be. We're not raising the grade of the movie theater, it's going to basically stay, it's a pretty flat site, so the elevation is relatively the same. On the Oliver Street, I'd have to just double-check my notes. So again, views three and four, this is from Old Country Road. Again, what we've done is we've taken our model, we've modeled in all the landscaping that we're doing, and then we've left in the chase bank in this location, and this would be the main access drive. One of the things we did with vegetation is that we really tried to, not only does the vegetation soften the look, but it also does, you know, block some of the new, some of the structure. One of the things I didn't mention at this point is that the existing facade of the entire building front is going to be revitalized. So it's no longer going to have what it looks like now with the peaks, it's going to be completely revitalized. And you could see that in some of the models and what you can see now from the roadway. Again, going to view number four, this is down this main drive aisle. So right now, it's about thirty-plus feet wide, we're going down to twenty-eight feet. This is still four feet over a normal access drive, and we've increased these landscape beds. Right now, there's some existing trees in there, we're ripping all of that out, taking out all those curves, adding in the landscape, adding not only a tree-lined accessway, but also adding vegetation underneath it. And that goes not only down the main access drive, but also down towards Gala. So then on the last two views here, we have, again, from CR-58, this is showing where the two restaurants are. The roadway actually sits about two to three feet higher. If you ever go there, you'll see it's a little bit dip into the parking lot. We're maintaining that same elevation, so it kind of falls in line with your code that states that you don't like headlights coming into 58, and we believe, but with that existing elevation staying the same, as well as adding some vegetation that we maintain code with that elevation. And lastly, we did a simulation from Ostrander Avenue. You know, we actually had to show a dotted line because you couldn't see the back from the roadway, and those are the elevations that we've done.
Can you show me King's Drive again?
So this is the cul-de-sac at the end.
Right. And can you show me in relation to that, the top of the ridge of that house that's on that picture, where the top of the movie theater would be?
So here's the back of the movie theater. This is, it's actually about, right about here. And if you, when you come closer, if you could come closer.
So it's about the same ridge height?
So again, the elevations of the pines were surveyed. Looking from that view, the elevations of pines actually range from sixty-five feet to seventy-nine feet, and these were surveyed. On the, on the Ostrander Avenue side, they range from about seventy to sixty feet, and that's the same along Oliver. Overall, again, the existing center is going from a four percent, four-point-seven percent landscaping increase to over fifteen percent. So we're not here too much to talk about the lighting, but what I will say is that everything will be dark sky compliant.
Well, dark sky compliant is sixteen feet, correct?
No, dark sky compliant relates to the way that the light is shown on, onto the pavement. So dark sky just means that the light is not going to go upwards into the sky.
I think there is a height requirement too, though, isn't there?
So there is a height requirement per code, but dark sky compliant has to do with the photometrics of projecting the light onto the property. And so when I say dark sky compliant, we're going to be compliant in the fact that we will be not having light shed onto the residences. We did come here with twenty-five feet height poles for the new ones. We're obviously going to, you know, per Charles, we're going to have to go back to that. But we will be adding some lights, and they will be dark sky compliant, and the fact that they will not shed light onto the residences, they'll be directed light onto the parking lot for a safe pathway.
You are aware that Costco down the block, down the road, requested twenty-five foot height on the parking lots, lights, and they were denied. You are aware of that, right?
Yes, sir.
We are aware of that. Of course, we have a different setup because we have pre-existing poles, but this really isn't on the agenda right now.
You have to speak into the mic, Mr. Cuddy.
Sorry.
We are aware of the Costco decision, but what I was pointing out to you is that this is somewhat a different situation because the lighting here is already pre-existing for forty years, and the poles are much higher. So they would normally stay, but we're really not addressing that tonight because I've indicated to you that we have asked that to be put on hold for the time being. Okay? Thank you. If I could, I just wanted to say just two brief things. One is that there's going to be two more hearings, so everybody here can feel comfortable they can come back again, but we're going to have a site plan hearing, and we're also going to have a special permit hearing. But we believe that the movie is significant enough to really consider this height variance because without the movie theater, the likelihood of this center being developed, redeveloped the way it's supposed to be is very small. And it really adds to the east end of the town to have this particular Riverhead area redeveloped. And so the movie theater becomes an absolutely important element.
But you are aware that all-new lighting requires to be compliant with code, right?
Well, absolutely. But we've never proposed to do something that's contrary to the lighting code. We just weren't completely aware of what the lighting code was, that's all.
So just to, just to finish up, one of the things is that we will be replacing the light heads on all the existing light poles, and so the site does look consistent when it comes to lighting, and it'll be LED lighting. So it will come before you or handle that at a different time. And that is all I have. If you have any further questions, we have plenty of people here that can answer that.
So you're with the engineering firm, correct?
Yes, sir.
So there is a serious significant increase in allowable building height from thirty-five feet, which is allowable, to sixty feet, correct?
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, the nearest stadium-type seating theaters are, I guess, Holtsville, the Islandia Theater, the Lowes in Stony Brook, and maybe the Regal in Ronkonkoma, which all like to call themselves stadium seating. What are their max, what are their building heights?
I'd have to get back to you about from other Regals.
I need to know that, yeah.
Understood.
So the only thing, Mr. Cuddy, you're looking for tonight is a approval on a sixty-foot high building, is that correct?
Yes, and the loading berth.
Okay.
Compared to three-to-one. That's correct.
So are you withdrawing your application for variance for the lighting?
No, I'm just asking that it be placed on hold. I'm sure that you're not going to vote on it.
So then it means that we're not going to vote on anything tonight, so everything is complete.
But we, we just want to take a look at that, so.
Right, that's why. I don't know necessarily if the loading bays are a big thing, but the building height's a big thing.
We understand.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just going to, I want to make that clear. So if you could explain to me the building heights of the other three closest stadium-seating type theaters in relation to yours, I would greatly appreciate that.
We believe it's very close, but we can't measure it.
They probably could excavate it now, but it's all swamp.
Well, I'd like to hear that from their engineer, you know?
That concludes our presentation.
All right. Is there anyone else to be heard? Please, line up. You know the drill.
Yep. Hi, Ronald Reagan.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I don't.
Help you got. Please state your name and address.
My name is James Hinchey. I live at one-thirty-seven Oliver Street, Riverhead, New York.
So you're on the east side of this.
We are mostly directed.
Right behind you.
It's kind of, don't worry, I don't need the mic. I've got a big voice. The way they took this picture, it was real cute how they did that. Now, if you were to come down to my house, which is directly next door, this will definitely be our whole back of our house when we look out the window. We recently purchased this.
You have to go for the mic to be recorded, sir.
We recently purchased this home because of the area. It is very nice. I have several concerns.
Who's wait?
Me and my wife.
That's okay.
The boss. The height of the, the height of the building right now is, is, it's too much as it is. And now you want to increase it by almost fifty percent? That's, that's not fair to us. Why don't they come, why didn't you guys take a picture where our house was? Our back of the building is right there. And then you propose to put parking spaces directly up behind our house, where today I picked up garbage bags? Because the inadequate fence, which they say is put up, where trees are growing through it, it's, the fence is falling down. They have, I tried to reach out to them to try to ask them to come fix this fence. I came down to the town, found out who did this, that. I called them, nobody never returned a phone call. Because apparently we don't matter. Another major concern is Oliver Street. Recently, somebody was killed on our street, Daniel. Now that's going to increase traffic, what, ten times? Where does our property values go? How is this helping us? Yes, I do believe that we do need to put something in this parking lot. But a sixty-foot wall, literally out of my back door? When I look out my kitchen window to do dishes, I'm going to look at a wall? Or a loading dock? Or the trash compactor?
What are you looking at now?
Open space.
No, between you and the window, really, I'm being honest.
I'm being honest with you too.
Are you looking at the dollar store?
The dollar store.
So, okay.
Okay, now that building is going to come up. If you look right there in that picture, you'll see where my home is, right there. I am third down from Lewin's Medical Supply, and I'm going to have a big wall. I didn't buy my house to have a big wall. I mean, if they can't maintain the fence that they have now, what are they going to do when there's more traffic there? What about the garbage in my yard that blows in there every day because of the inadequate fence that's there? Yes, the trees are nice there, they said they're beautiful pines. Yeah, I got them growing through my fence. They didn't cut the, they didn't cut the limb off, they built around it. Literally a limb coming through the fence where they made patchwork. But that's real good.
Let me ask you, what would make you happy?
What would make me happy? What would honestly would make me happy? A sound deadening wall.
So you don't want a movie theater?
I don't want to see that building at all.
So you don't want a movie theater?
Oh, no, I didn't say I didn't want a movie theater. I don't want to see the building.
Okay. So you don't want the building built?
I did not say I didn't want the building built, but there has to be some sort of compromise.
Tell me what you're looking for.
What am I looking for? I would have to sit down and look at it with not only me, but my neighbors also, because it directly affects them. The new people that just purchased their home, the people that live to the other side of the home that have been there for many, many, many years. And I'm sure that they have, they'll say too. This directly affects a lot of people, and especially with the traffic coming down that road, like I said.
So it sounds like that you would probably want a commitment or some kind of work done along that property line.
Oh, yes, definitely.
As opposed to what they're proposing right now as far as what's going to go along that property line?
What, apparently they said that nothing's good, they want to put parking stalls directly behind our house. Okay, now, I don't know if you've been to the movie theater, you know, a lot of young people do go, and I'm not saying there's nothing wrong with young people, but you, the bottles and the cans that fly over the fence, because the height of that fence is only eight feet, and it doesn't stop nothing.
Well, I have other concerns besides that, but I don't think there should be parking in that immediate area anyway for other reasons.
I believe that would be a great fire zone.
I don't think it would meet the requirement, but that's, that's not for right this moment. I'm more concerned about what the commitment is with PGC Associates and the developer of Regal is to, and committed to the people that live on Oliver Street. I want to see what they have to say as to how they would mitigate that.
Yes, I would definitely like to hear that myself.
Let's, let's face the reality, we need a movie theater in this town, and we're going to, we're going to have one.
Oh, I can understand that we're going to have, have one, but that's going to come at, like I said, I just purchased my home.
Not particularly at your own expense.
Right, but it's going to be.
So, but I think you have their attention. I think you have their attention, and I think they'll work with you if you, if you maybe approach them after the meeting or whatever the case may be.
I tried that, sir. I called on several occasions, Mr. Barnes, and no one.
Well, calling is one thing, but now that they're here.
Yeah, but if they're not going to return my phone call, what's it, they're going to walk out of here and do something else? They haven't made any effort at all.
Many years in a different capacity in the town.
I know, I know who you are.
They, they were not always responsive, okay? They're a large company, and they're spread out, so you need a commitment or some kind of commitment.
Commitment, we need action.
I, I know that. I'm aware of it.
Because the parking lot.
I've been there personally myself on many occasions to deal with their inaction.
Well, their parking lot right now is, is a disaster.
However, Regal is a different company, it's not Walmart.
That, I think, I think it would help the economy of this town. I think it would help, bring people towards our town to start spending a little bit of money like they did downtown Riverhead. It looks beautiful down there. But you also got to look at this, both sides of the fence.
I have. I'm, I'm looking at it now, and I'm very aware of the problem that exists there, and it's going to continue to.
It's going to get worse, actually.
If there is no agreement between the people on that block and with PGC Associates.
Okay.
So I, and I, Mr. Cuddy's a gentleman, he will reach out and do what he has to do to try to mitigate that if he can, and I'm quite sure they'll talk to you maybe after the meeting. Maybe they'll return your call, but I don't know if we're voting on this tonight or not. I'm not right now feeling that I would.
Okay.
So it's addressed.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Can I just address the engineer's office again? I think there's three requirements that we're looking for here to move forward. Is the height, number one, the height of the stadium seating theater in relation to other stadium theaters, specifically Islandia, Stony Brook, and Ronkonkoma. Two, a visual, which you're not showing here, of what the actual sightline is going to be for the homes on King's Drive and Oliver Street in relation to the pictures that you shown there, which you haven't shown really. I, I want an engineer's office to do that.
I've got a red line.
What's that?
A red line.
Yeah, well, I mean, they, they have the ability to do that.
What we could do is, what he's asking is, we do have all the elevation, so we could do is build a profile.
Yeah.
So build a profile from, from the street, through the houses, and then through to the ...
You have the ability to do that with CAD and DIMM and all that other thing.
Absolutely.
And then three, is what your plan is to loosen the load for these homeowners on King's Drive and Oliver Street, on what your plan is to kind of loosen this, if you could show me why you need to be a sixty-foot building, what's your plan to lessen the load for these homeowners?
Okay, we can do that. I will make one note on the, on the parking if I can.
Yeah.
So existing today, these parking stalls here do exist up to about this point, and then we continued that same row and added the parking stalls. On this side, it is an eight-foot stockade fence. We got someone talking about the repair of it. Um, but the property owner will repair of it, and we've already started that process. I, I will say that to that effect. Um, and then we did survey these trees here, um, and they do range between sixty to seven feet, seventy feet in height. So while they're, uh, from the first floor, you know, that, this is what you're seeing. To just to kind of clarify the, the additional parking area.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the fire access, like that, that need to exist there.
It's, it's currently.
Fire marshal reviewed this yet?
So, uh, the plans are submitted, uh, to the planning department. They're probably submitting now. Um, for as far as fire access, there's a twenty-six-foot required drive aisle around the building, and that's what's shown here.
So, so just to make it clear, all of my requirements, those three that I stated, are based on the height of the building?
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
Understood. So we'll, we'll show what we could do, is we could show, um, um, you know, several.
Several shots from, from King's Drive and, and from Oliver Street, yes.
And then, and then, you know, a couple from, from down here, maybe.
Because there's not a significant difference in grade height, correct?
There, there's actually, um, there's a couple discs actually in, in King's Drive, surprisingly. Um.
That range is actually only, it dips down.
Yeah, you could actually, you could actually almost kind of see it, um, in, in the photo. Where you can see actually the, the, it does go up, um, in, in elevation.
West or rocks, elevation rocks.
It's slightly, yeah, yeah. And then, and what we did do, um, on, on Oliver, we did try to take this, a space that was, that was open enough to actually show the movie theaters, but we weren't just showing homes. Um, and you could see here, um, you know, again, these, these range from like six, sixty to seventy feet in height, these, these evergreens. Uh, and that's what we're.
The other thing that I'm going to address too, or I'd like to address is deliveries. Um, I know it's a problem with some of the neighbors there. There are times when deliveries are made at three o'clock in the morning. And, and I know it's not what this theater, but that's going to have to be like some kind of a condition. But that should not have any allowed deliveries after seven AM or eight AM. It's very distracting for the neighbors there, and I'm aware of it. So just put that in your notes as to how you may want to deal with that, Charles. I don't know if it's going to be with the planning board or with the town board through a special permit when they're considering the restaurants. But that needs to be addressed. Okay. Yes?
Come right up.
Sorry.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Dale Young. I live at one twenty-five Oliver Street, Riverhead, New York.
How many lots, uh, lots down are you from where the entrance is to the shopping center?
Probably about five. If you look out my window in my kitchen, I'm looking at a massive wall. I live right next to Jimmy and his wife. They're to the north of me. Now, when I look out my window, if you compare the top of that podium where you are right there, and now you want to put, and that would be, let's just say, the height of what is there now. And I'm looking at that. Well, now I'm going to be looking at the wall behind you as far as height goes. The pictures here do not show what, what it looks like.
Well, she said she's going to do that for.
And I am, I don't know where everyone is that is involved with this. But I, yes.
And they need to see every homeowner on Oliver Street.
Yes, exactly.
Get the pictures from their perspective of what your is.
This is what I was going to say. I am welcoming you to my home to come in and take a picture from my backyard, take a picture from theirs, take a picture from the others, so you can see. You talk about vegetation. I've lived on that street since nineteen sixty-four. My parents owned property. I bought the house next to them. They died. Since then, they've built several other homes. So I, I'm very familiar with Oliver Street and those trees that were put there before we even came in in sixty-four. Yes, they're sixty, seventy feet high, but they're sparse because they're old. I don't want to see them removed because it's the only thing that gives us a little bit of a buffer and a little bit of a visual where it's hiding, it's hiding the building. But they're not lush trees like they lead you to believe. They're not. So, I, I'm not now, trust me. But what I want to say is, it looks good, but it really isn't. So you've got to come in. Many years ago, when we were dealing with, um, BJ's and Kmart, I came in here because we were having issues then. And, you know, we had to fight to get the spaces that we needed between our homes and the shopping center. They came to my home and they realized when they actually visualized what distance is. And they talk about a hundred and eight feet away from the home property lines. That's nothing. Now, I'm also going to discuss with you, um, your loading docks and your trash compactors. The shopping centers that are there now, BJ's and Kmart, have compactors and loading zones. And all hours of the night, as Leroy said, the trash compactors are slamming and banging. And I'm down further from that, and I can hear it in my house. And I know that several of my neighbors are to the south of me, and it's right out their front door. Now, you're proposing another trash compactor and loading zone right next to my house, so I'm getting it from both ends. I'm getting it from now the new center, the new cinema and BJ's. And it's like the people on Oliver Street are being penalized because we live there and all these shopping centers are building and changing, and, and that's understandable. And for the record, I don't have a problem with the cinema. I think it's a wonderful idea. But the height is out of control. I don't think it's necessary. And if you see the size of the building that's there now, and you've come and actually visually look at it, you'll agree. It's out of control.
Let me ask a question.
Go ahead.
Why would they be proposing a sixty-foot height?
I have no idea.
Do you, do you think it's, you can do stadium seating in a smaller, lower building?
Why do you have to do stadium seating?
Because it's the bomb.
Well, so what?
That's why.
So what?
Have you ever been to a movie theater with real stadium seating?
I've been to movie theaters before. Trust me.
Nine.
I don't care. I don't care.
Well, I'm just talking to about.
Oh, I understand. And I, and.
You're in the entertainment industry.
Put in a movie theater. Have a ball. Have a good time. Do it. I don't understand why it has to be so huge.
Okay.
Okay?
Forget it.
All right.
Thank you.
The lighting issue, I know you're going to address that at another time. The only thing I want you to consider and, and the developers to consider is the fact that when the other shopping center across the way came in, the lights shined in our homes, and I know they said they're going to protect us so that that doesn't happen. I want to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Oh, that's for sure.
Thank you.
That will not happen.
And the loading zones, I want to see if they could move those off of Oliver Street so that we don't have to listen to it from Oliver Street. And that cinema, and also BJ's and Kmart's all hours of the night. That compact is right out my back bedroom window. And you've got to take into consideration the people that live there, who have lived there for a very long time. And the majority of the people on that block have lived there for a very long time. And they're dealing with it because what are we going to do? But this is just starting, so if we can nip it in the bud and move it so that we don't have to deal with it again in the future, that would be nice.
Okay, Mrs. Young, so if they put in a bigger buffer there as far as trees and things like that, that would be acceptable? As, as BJ's and Kmart did? And then if they got hours on their equipment like the, the compactors and things like that, that would be acceptable, I guess?
No, it wouldn't. Because I've been complaining, Kmart and BJ's, and they say, well, they're only supposed to do it in certain hours. They don't.
Well, where do you complain?
They don't. I've gone down there. I've gone to the town. You know, you know yourself. You could tell somebody to do something, and they're not going to do it. They'll say, oh, sure. But the minute you leave, they're going to do what they want. And am I going to call the police at three o'clock in the morning, five days a week, six days a week? No. So now we're stuck. Let's avoid that before it happens.
I don't disagree with you.
Come to my house.
I don't think you should stop complaining, though. You're a citizen. You pay taxes.
I, I do.
Call code enforcement. I would go to town board meetings and spark at the mic as you are tonight.
I've been that route before. I've worked in this town. I handle town code cases.
I wouldn't stop, though.
You know? So come take a look. And you put yourself in all of our positions. Would you want that in your backyard? Would you want that loading dock in your back bedroom windows? Would you want that trash compactor banging all hours of the night because the kid that's operating it, he doesn't care? He doesn't care. He's going to do it when he wants to do it, if he does at all.
Okay.
So come, take a look, please. I invite you. I'll make you a cup of coffee, and we'll sit down.
How long have you been living there, man?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry? How long have you been living there?
I have lived on that street since nineteen sixty-four, and I have currently lived in my home, which is a few doors down, since nineteen eighty-four.
In King's Drive or Oliver Street?
Oliver Street.
In the entire time you lived there, that shopping center's been there?
That shopping center was there before we moved in. Then it was like Wilco, and it was way down. That store wasn't there. They built that many years later, when they put Walmart in there. And then they came closer. So, you know, it wasn't there. The trees were nice. Everything was fine. It was, you know, Riverhead was much smaller then. And it's growing. And like I said, I don't have a problem with the movie theater. I just don't understand why the wall.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm willing, you know, Mr. Cutty, I, I'm willing to bet that the Regal and Ronkonkoma, Stony Brook Lowes, and the Islandia, whatever that gets called, um.
Island sixteen.
Island sixteen. I'm willing to bet, I may be proven wrong, but I'm willing to bet it's not sixty feet tall. So I, you need to show me the height of those buildings, okay? All right, thank you.
Yes, what about Matatuck?
That's not a stadium seating.
Yeah.
This has to be a stadium seating?
It's, it's the modern, uh, uh, you know, thing. So I, you know, I, I, I'd like to see.
Want to buy my house? I'll get with it.
Well, I mean, get with the times.
But I'm saying, you know, we're homeowners. We're, we're stuck there.
I understand.
Okay.
I said what I thought I felt represented what you feel in the audience.
Yes.
And I thought I would open up the communication between you and the property owner's tenet proposed tenant. Keep working, and hopefully do work together, because I'm quite sure.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Cutty, and he said we can chat, and, you know, he'll be very instrumental in trying to reach them, and if there's any questions.
Okay.
But.
Sounds good.
As far as the others, the, uh, restaurants that you're going to discuss at a later time, I don't have a problem with that either.
We're not going to be discussing.
No, not tonight. But I mean, I don't have a problem with it. And the only problem that I really have is the dumpster, the trash compactor that's in the backyard. Maybe relocate it where the other one is. You know, they have them there now, and we don't hear them. So maybe that would be a good idea, is to leave them where they are.
Okay, Mrs. Young, if someone else wants to speak.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Boy, I'm getting good exercise tonight. Please raise your right hand. Salmers way to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Joseph Gilroy. I live at ten ninety-six Ostrander Avenue, the other side. Um, a couple of concerns I have, and I know this is about zoning, and I'm going to keep it brief because I know people are waiting. I actually just spoke with the property owner today, and I feel confident that he is going to start working with the people in the surrounding community to fix some of the problems. But with zoning, uh, the sixty-foot-high building, I think you should definitely reach out to the fire department and have them also inspect the plans, because that's going to be a, a big concern for them. They do have a hundred and two-foot ladder truck, but they should know the layout of this building before anything proceeds and, and the best course of action to proceed to it. Also, with this movie theater, as they said, it is going to bring a lot more traffic to the area. And besides zoning, I would like to know what the town's going to do as far as police enforcement stepping up. You're going to have a lot of younger kids in that area. Uh, I'm on Ostrander. I have young kids myself. I know what happens when kids hang out at movie theaters on weekends. So I want to know what they're going to do to also protect the surrounding community, which isn't the property owner, but the town itself. It, it's, it's a concern, I think, for all the property owners. There are not just garbage going over the fence. It's the safety of the community, the people speeding up the blocks, people rushing to get to the movie theater. What are they going to do to ensure the safety of the people in the surrounding area? Stop signs, speed bumps, I mean, something. We, we need more planning for just, not just the area itself, but the surrounding community that people are going to be coming in, because you do have from Oliver Street and Ostrander going in there. It, it's a safety issue because we all have kids on these roads too. That's all I really wanted to say, is wanted to get it on. I spoke with, uh, like I said, the property owner. I feel confident that he is going to be working with the, the homeowners that live adjacent to the, uh, the building. And I, I'm all for it. I think it's a great thing for the town of Riverhead. Um, I, I would like to know, are we going to get copies of these plans today, or? Okay, okay. That's all I really have to say, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have to look through the mic.
How are you? Salmers way to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. Name and address?
Al Saperstein, one forty King's Drive, Riverhead. The rear of my property abuts the parking lot, uh, the former Walmart. Adjacent to where the garden center used to be. First of all, like everybody else, I'm opposed to a sixty-foot-high building back there. I don't think it's necessary. Want to put a movie theater back there? Good luck. The compactor and the other stuff, put it someplace where it's not going to bother the residents. As far as the fence is concerned, it's a disaster. I go back there, even in the winter, once every couple of weeks with a big box of nails and a hammer. And I nail back into the fence. The panels keep coming down. Whether somebody hits it with a truck going by there or what, I don't know. The fence isn't high enough. I went back there just the other day with a plastic bag. Whiskey bottles, wine bottles, beer cans, soda bottles, McDonald's bags with garbage in it, other bags. People come back there, they drive back there, and they have their lunch and throw everything over. You need a higher fence. I'm also concerned about security, whether it's town or private security. Walmart had pretty good security. They always had their little car driving around.
Yeah, but what do they do?
Huh?
Come on, they don't do anything.
What?
They don't do anything. They just drive around.
So they drive around. Somebody sees a red light.
I want that.
It's the feel-good, Lee. It's the feel-good. But, uh, I'm concerned about security back there. I'm concerned about the garbage that comes over the fence. As far as the trees are concerned, they're a disaster. Some of them are dead that are abut my property, and they're just sitting up there with dead branches. There's no foliage on them. They might as well just cut them down. Use good firewood. Uh, they, they never wore any good. But the fence is a big thing, security also. When are they going to do demolition? Not like Walmart once did when they first started fixing it up at night. I don't want to see demolition done at night. I don't want to see buildings done at night. The noise is horrendous. And they've got lights back there now that shine into my windows. So what are these other lights going to be like? So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd see if Mr. Chairman, uh, Charles getting up again will.
Go ahead, sir.
You want to go up?
Let him go up.
Yeah, can I go up?
Yeah, yeah, there's somebody coming up right over there.
Salmers way to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. It's on this way to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Tom Nygen, eleven thirty-one Ostrander. I am directly across the street from the side entrance on the Ostrander side. Greenhouse, flagpole, small cannon. Uh, I know some of my questions, I jotted down a bunch of stuff and we just did meet with the property owner and stuff a little bit, talked to him. Uh, but I know some of the issues, just like my neighbors', I mean, is gonna be with the planning, with the town board and, and somewhat, you know? Is this locked in stone yet? Is this site plan locked?
No.
No, that's why we're here.
It's only the beginning stages of the process.
Has there been a traffic study done?
Yes.
Save that for a special permit. Yes.
Okay.
But that will come up during the special permit process.
Okay, okay. Um, one of my concerns definitely is traffic. Both probably the Oliver Street side and our side, since I'm on the opposite side. Uh, Ostrander is the cut-through to get from Main Street to Route fifty-eight. And it always has been. This is the oldest, uh, property that had a grocery store and a retail store since I can remember. I mean, it was Wal-, it was, uh, Caldoor and, and, uh,
Grant's.
Grant's.
Wilco.
Wilco.
All right.
You know, that's going back. So, and it was always a cut-through. There was nothing else on Route fifty-eight, absolutely nothing else. And this property is unique because you've got two neighborhood roads with two side entrances coming into it. There's no other property on Route fifty-eight that has a side entrance, other than Home Depot from Mill Road, that has a side entrance to it, that I can think of right now.
Lowes has a rear entrance.
Huh?
Lowes has a rear entrance.
Lowes has a rear entrance, correct. But there's no neighborhood around it.
Oh, well, okay.
But, you know what I'm saying? So definitely pro-, uh, traffic is an issue. I don't know why maybe they can't make the Route fifty-eight entrance wider to allow most of their congestion from the movie theater to go out the center and not the out streets. That's one concern. Uh, and incoming also, we have a lot of truck traffic, especially on my side, coming into the backside of Gala Foods and the retail stores. All of the delivery trucks, all of the beer trucks, soda trucks, food trucks, all come in off of Route fifty-eight, hit Ostrander traffic light and come in that way. And they all exit that way also. Because they hit the back of the stores and go up and around. I have no curb left on my front property. None. It's sunk in about three inches now. It's totally sunk in. Geo, Geo has been out to my house many times and looked at it. He's repaved sections of it and he just shakes his head too. So that's one concern. We've addressed it with the town to see if we can limit the weight limit on Ostrander. So we're, we're working on that issue.
Um. Just to keep in mind, we're primarily, right now, the, the, the application is for building height.
Yes.
The number of stalls.
That's why I'm trying to keep it short.
Yeah, the number of parking stalls and, uh, the number of loading docks. Um, I, I think that is the primary, I may be wrong, Mr. Cuddy, am I correct?
The parking stalls.
So you're primarily looking for the building height and the number of loading docks? Yeah. So that, that is really what's before us right now.
Yeah, there are other entities in the town that will entertain and approve permits and site plans for these issues that you're concerned with. We're primarily concerned with just the heights tonight at least.
All that's really before us is the height.
Right, they eliminate the lights.
As to what we kinda cannot approve under the law.
From?
They've withdrawn for the moment.
Right, they withdrew. No problem. No problem. But also the stores, I mean, not the stores, but the restaurants are taking away parking spots as it is too, right?
If you wanna call it that.
They're not an issue on this either.
They're not an issue on that yet?
Not for this variance here.
They're actually permitted uses. They're permitted to be there. And so is the movie theater because they added it to the zoning district. What's at issue is the height of the building.
Right. Ideally, if they used the old Walmart next to the Home Depot as the movie theater, it'd probably be ideal. But not right now.
Oh, you mean wall bounce?
Wall bounce, yes, correct, wall bounce.
Then everybody in that whole complex will be here.
That's empty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we done?
Okay, this, one more comment. This person hasn't been up yet. Come on up, please.
There's a couple.
What we're gonna do is we are gonna revisit this site and we'll stop into some of your homes. No coffee is necessary. And we'll take a look at what, what you're looking at. Also, Mr. Seabrook had asked for elevations for Mrs. Riley, is it? Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
And they're gonna be brought forth, so we're gonna see those. We'll collect this all together and see where we are. Uh, some of this stuff is gonna just be repetitious. I feel that a lot of the complaints that you folks have are with the ho-, are with the owner of the existing property. You know, like the maintenance of the fence and the garbage and all that stuff. That's got nothing to do with the people that are looking for the variances right now. So I hope that you're putting pressure on those prop-, that property owner as far as making your complaints and continue. You know, the squeaky wheel, I guess, gets the oil or something. I know it's hard to do business that way, but unfortunately, that seems to be the trend. Uh, so I'd like to hear what this gentleman has to say. And I think we should, uh, close the meeting till next time. Not close it, but just adjourn it. And not that we don't wanna hear anything more, but we don't wanna be repetitious, you know, kicking the same football around because I'm sure that you all share the same problems as far as the sites and things like that. So, do you solemn miss with tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Uh, please state your name and your address.
Uh, Mike Goodsell, one sixty-two King's Drive.
Okay, Mike, what would you like to say? Please go ahead.
Uh, I, I will be brief. But my, um, I, when we heard that there was a movie theater, for a long time, I've been wanting one. My wife and I go to movies quite a bit and I'm very excited. When I read that it was sixty feet high, I was somewhat flabbergasted. And so I am a huge movie fan and I'm very excited about a movie theater there. We go to, we go to Holbrook, we go to Stony Brook probably once a week. And I, and I agree with what you said. I don't think they're anywhere near sixty feet. I mean, I, I, we were just there and I'm looking at it. I'm trying to go, you know, ten, twenty, thirty. You know, you're, you're going by stories and the thought of that being double that for, and there's no prob-, like, it's, I don't think, it doesn't reduce the enjoyment of the movie theater. They got beautiful seats there. They got recliners. I mean, you're like, and the, so it's, it's a very enjoyable experience and I don't think it's anywhere near sixty feet. Now, if I didn't live in the area, that maybe the idea of gigantic building and maybe it would be big, but I don't even know. I, I, I guess my biggest thing that I don't understand is why it has to be sixty feet. I, I, unless it's some kind of, I don't, I just don't get that. That's, and, and I don't think it affects our view as much, looking at those plans, but it took me a while to figure out where we were on that. If it was behind my backyard, I can see the concern. And, you know, I have other concerns about traffic in the back because we, we, you know, and all that. But since that's already been said, my, that's my main, that's the main thing I wanted to say. As a movie buff and a movie enjoyer, I just, I, I would like to also see how it compares to what's there and why, and why that sixty feet is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir? You spoke, let's, have you?
I don't need to swear in again or that kind of stuff?
No. This should be brought up here or not, but what about the removal of the asbestos that's in that building? And yes, there is asbestos.
That's building code.
That's, that's being taken care of.
That's, that's, that's building code. That's gotta happen.
Because that's dangerous. That's gonna hurt some.
New York State Department of Labor.
So that, what do we do as homeowners?
Getting his permit.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The solemnest word.
Yes, I do.
The whole truth, not the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Please state your name and address.
My name is William Kugelman, two ninety-five Madison Avenue, second floor, New York, New York. I'm here tonight as a representative of Phillips International. We are the managing agent for the property and we've assembled the team to help us, um, bring back this property back to life and make it economically viable. And as I sat here tonight and I hear all the concerns of the neighbors, I wanna assure that we are committed to work with the community and to work with the town to make this a viable, uh, project. And we'll come to, uh, a resolution and a compromise to move this project forward.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. If anybody objects in the audience, I'd like to adjourn this till next week. What?
Uh, before, I just wanna just specifically request from the engineering company one more ti-, I, I just want to make it specific. One, the heights of comparable buildings, comparable theaters, Ronkonkoma, Stony Brook and, um, Islandia, the Island sixteen theaters. Um, two, a, a visual, you, you provided us visual drawings. However, you didn't show us in, in relation to the, uh, proposed, uh, theater. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see engineering drawings on the views from Oliver Street and King's Drive. That's the second one. The third thing I'd like to see is what is your plan to lessen the load for the residents in that area? Those three items I absolutely must see when we come back here in two weeks.
Sir, when you say lessen the load, are you talking, you're talking about visual impacts?
Visual impact, correct.
Okay. I'd like to adjourn this to April twenty-seventh. Can someone move that, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to adjourn, uh, appeal number seventeen dash eighteen to April twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we'll see you folks on the twenty-seventh, God willing. Thank you all for coming and, and talking at the mic. That's all we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
We'll take a five minutes break.
Get the pic going.
We'll get no shot.
Get the barbecue going.
Absurd.
Does that come with a bottle or not?
Chairman, your ticket's in the brand.
We got popcorn.
Yeah, get a pizza. Hello, New York.
Yeah, I know. No, that is definitely not stadium seating in the audience.
DC two?
No.
What about it? You can come. Do you wanna come in on the? You know what, it's.
One look.
Can I send it to you?
They need to have the loading stuff put on the bot-, you know, at, we need to add the loading information on them.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Does Otto's family own the diner instead of?
Yes.
Because I've never seen it.
Here every week.
I'm disappointed that they're not open.
She's doing something different with her.
Well, they are open.
Eighteenth, which is income tax day.
You were watching me.
I was a flower tag. So my, my color. My little bottom line is the house six or building behind me. We all had to just, we're a, we're a number and I heard the traffic. No, not a chance. If you wanna see.
Mr. Chairman.
They're not.
Mr. Chairman.
They're not really.
Mr. Acting Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you talking about?
You're out of order. This meeting should be, I can't bear to keep going.
There's a girl in the back.
I'm running this thing, okay?
I think you're doing a hell of a job.
You shouldn't take a water pill.
It's not waterproof.
Oh. You can grab her right now.
I'll be up to about three thousand. No grams, obviously, three cents. Can I have your attention, folks? Uh, we have four more cases to hear, so if you guys could evacuate, I would really appreciate it.
Evacuate? You mean exit. Evacuate is like a whole, like. What is this?
I know.
Folks, we gotta, uh, exit the building, please.
If you don't mind, please.
Really, we got four cases to go.
We have a couple more cases. Sure, yes.
No, not a couple. We got four. This is when people get together.
We need to lie to the moms.
You want us to go?
Please.
Okay. Al, take care. Thank you. We got four more cases.
Yeah.
Take care.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good. You got a knee replacement. He's good.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a nice night.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, folks. Courtney, thank you. Okay. Let's go. Let's read the next one.
Okay, next up, we have appeal number two thousand seventeen dash nineteen for Blaine Rosser. Fifty Hornpipe Drive, Riverhead, for variance is two and/or relief from the provisions of chapter three zero.
Excuse me. Yes. Mr. Otto, excuse me. I'm disappointed that the diner is not open. I thought it was gonna be open because I was waiting to go eat there. April eighteenth, sir, eleven o'clock. What? Because I only know the one that's there at night. I only. Oh, John, he's the younger guy. I appreciate it, but we gotta get going. We still have four cases, but. Now I, now it's the eighteenth, which is income tax day.
Yeah.
Come in and celebrate. Thank you very much.
I'm not, I'm not having a camera right now.
I'm gonna go back to the city, but I'll be back on the weekends. Good. Please stay alone. Thank you.
Just made a tax schedule, so I'm not, I'm not really, my, my, my happy, you know?
What?
Okay, uh, for Mr. Rosser, we have variances two and/or relief from the provisions of chapter three zero one, section nine A one B, where the proposed accessory deck in the side yard is fifteen point three feet from the side street line where the minimum required is fifty feet.
Okay. Okay, I know you can't raise your right hand, but your attention, you're gonna, you're solemn, we're gonna tell the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Blaine Rosser. I live at fifty Hornpipe Drive in Riverhead, up in Reeves Park.
And tell us what you're seeking.
Okay, um, simply, uh, about a year and a half ago, you folks gave us a variance to be able to increase the deck size in our house another ten feet back by seventeen feet. Um, as we were gutting and redoing the house there, we met with our new neighbors, Tom and Mary Ellen O'Hare, right behind us. That's the picture I gave you just a moment ago to kinda give you an idea of how close we are in proximity to our neighbors. And when we met with them, they're very nice to us, very kind people, and they said, listen, why don't you do something like we did? Rather than go closer to our property because our properties are very small, would you consider moving your deck to the east rather than to the north toward our house, as we did and as our neighbors behind us did? And so we said, yes. The short version is, we could do this. And so we resubmitted to do exactly that. Instead of moving the deck back another ten feet, we're going sideways nine by sixteen feet. That's our request.
We have a picture of your property.
Yes, that would be, that is looking back at the O'Hares' home and it's just kinda depicting what they did. And then beyond that, you can see the, the folks behind them did the same thing. And, um, you can see the edge of my deck where the step comes down. So my deck is gonna come out, if you allow me to, right over the top of the steps that's currently there that walk up to it.
Oh, I'm going to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Emily, you want to read the next?
Okay, next, we have Appeal Number two thousand seventeen dash twenty for Higgins Housing Initiative LLC at seventeen Willa Street, Aquabog, for variances two and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty-four point nine percent of the lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is nine and a half feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. The proposed combined side yard setback is nineteen feet, where the minimum required is fifty-five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is thirty-seven point two feet, where the minimum required is sixty. Be approved in accordance with this application and sketches and amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted?
Thank you very much.
Your variance has been granted?
You're welcome.
Next, we have Appeal Number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-one for Mark Reese of Forty Creek Road, Wading River, for variances two and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter two nineteen, Section ten B, where the proposed addition to a non-movable structure is within the coastal erosion hazard area, where such development is not permitted.
Another right hand, right? I do solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state name and address.
My name is Richard Searls. I'm an architect with offices at fifty-five Wood Chalk Hall Lane, Wading River, representing the Klan.
What are you seeking?
We're seeking a variance to put a second story on an existing residence on Creek Road. The Chapter two nineteen, I believe, considers this as a major addition, which.
Didn't see the.
Yeah, which is, I guess, a formality. The, the EC regulations that we had looked at with this, when they, when they deal with the chapter, when they deal with major additions in a coastal hazard erosion line, require a twenty-five percent increase in the first floor to become a major addition. The town has that, had taken that out of their code, I guess, back in nineteen ninety-one somewhere in that area. But I have a list of, or several pictures of houses, the houses to the east and the west of Mr. Reese's house are both two stories. They were, they're two and a half, almost three stories in height. There's a number of them along Creek Road, so we would conform to the community as far as the heights are concerned. We're not proposing any increase whatsoever for the footprint of the building, so this will be directly over what's already there. I submit these photos for the.
Thank you, Mr. Searls.
I also have letters of recommendation for approval from the Rignetta family, which is the property owner to the west, and from the Ficano family, which is the property owner to the east.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to note that I'm recusing myself from this hearing.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this hearing? Yes, sir.
That's Mr. Reese. He'd like to, I think he'd like to speak also.
Okay. I do solemn swear. You do solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state name and address.
I'm Mark Reese, forty Creek Road, Wading River. Last time I said I do, I'm in trouble. So, good evening, members of the board. I'm here in the hopes that you would grant the relief from, from the two nineteen restriction for building. I wanted to emphasize that all of the construction that's going to happen is going to happen from the driveway side. There should be absolutely no impacts on erosion on the beach whatsoever. Our interest in having this is, we've owned the home since two thousand and five. It's a single bedroom home. It's about seven hundred and fifty square feet of sort of living space and then an additional two hundred and thirty or so feet of outdoor deck. All of our improvements would be restricted to the existing footprint, as Mr. Searls said. But having a one-bedroom home is, you know, is kind of fun when the kids were little. Fast forward twelve years, it doesn't work quite as well anymore, and it certainly won't work that well going into retirement, where we want to enjoy the house year-round and, you know, be able to host the kids a little bit more once they have their significant others as well. So we're hoping that you would grant this variance so we could move forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, okay, board, you have any questions?
I just, I just, as you're going through the photographs, just for a chuckle, the, the last photograph in the pile is the view.
Wonderful.
So, just to, just to put a little humor in there, that's, that's across the street. That would make a good movie theater. It's more than sixty feet tall.
Never thought of that.
I also, I also worked for the property owner in response to the posting, that owns the property across the street from us as well, which was just the Wetman's parcel, but he also indicated his support for the project.
This is not your home?
No, that's the county.
Okay, so they put the wrong address on there.
That's directed to the east.
Okay.
I can correct that.
No, no. So is your house in here?
It's in, it's in the notices of, with the posting. There's a picture there. There's one close up and one from a distance.
That's the one I looked at.
Move this on a console?
Yes.
Get that boat out of the yard. Get it on a dock.
Get in the water.
Is that a makeover? It's a contender, like mine?
Board, do you have any questions? Who has this?
I do. Ready?
Yep.
I move that the determination of Mark Reese of forty Creek Road, Wading River, for variances two and relief from provisions of Chapter two nineteen, Section ten B, where a proposed addition to a non-movable structure is within the coastal erosion hazard area, where such development is not permitted. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with the amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted? Good luck. Happy Easter.
And to you as well. Thank you, folks. I appreciate that. And by the way, I have a little beach glass for all you people.
You're being so kind. Do you have some?
Oh. Thank you.
I put up a little beach glass for you guys.
Oh, I'm going to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Emily, you want to read the next?
Okay, next, we have Appeal Number two thousand seventeen dash twenty for Higgins Housing Initiative LLC at seventeen Willa Street, Aquabog, for variances two and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty-four point nine percent of the lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard, front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum required is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is nine and a half feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. The proposed combined side yard setback is nineteen feet, where the minimum required is fifty-five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is fifty-three point seven feet, where the minimum required is sixty.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Are you attorney, sir?
Yes, I am.
Good, we're going to waive that.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Don Higgins. I'm the attorney for the applicant. My office is at one five six four Main Road in Jameisport, New York. We were previously before this board for this home, and the board was kind enough to grant a decision in December of two thousand and fourteen. The owner was not able to move forward with construction within that timeframe. Nothing has changed, so we would respectfully request that the variance be granted or mechanically, whatever procedural steps are necessary, so that the owner can continue and is now ready to build the house. The Health Department approval that they secured is still in effect.
That's good.
That's good, yeah.
So this is the second lot as you turn in on the right?
That's correct, yes.
It's got some fill on it.
That's correct. It's virtually the last vacant lot after the lot at the end of the street is built upon.
Where are those people now?
Right. Guess they don't care.
No, they do.
Is anyone that would like to address this hearing? Board, anybody?
Fine with this.
Okay, who's got it?
I do, sir. I move that the determination of Higgins Housing Initiative, Willa Street, Aquabog, for variances and relief from provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface is twenty-four point nine percent of the lot area, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. The proposed front yard setback is thirty feet, where the minimum is fifty feet. The proposed side yard setback is nine point five feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. The proposed combined side yard setback is nineteen feet, where the minimum required is fifty-five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is fifty-three point seven feet, where the minimum required is sixty. Be approved in accordance with this application and sketches and amendments there too, if any, as filed with the building inspector. Second.
Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted? Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Just going to wait for another member to show.
Sure.
I have to apologize for this array in this file. I got mine mixed in with yours.
This is the last one?
Yes.
Oh, great. I'll be quick. It's close to my bedtime.
Bingo. We're going to read it.
Finally, we have Appeal Number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two for Stephen Hannan of five eighty-two Peconic Bay Boulevard in Aquabog, for variances two and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where the proposed impervious surface coverage is twenty-one point three percent of the lot, where the maximum permitted is fifteen percent. Chapter three oh one, Section seventeen, where the proposed side yard setbacks are nineteen point two feet and nineteen point eight feet, where the minimum required is twenty-five feet. The proposed combined side yard is thirty-nine feet, where the minimum required is fifty-five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is fifty-three point seven feet, where the minimum required is sixty.
Good evening. My name is Don Higgins. I'm the attorney for the applicant. And I just passed up to the board reduced copies of the elevation and floor plan, and I brought extras, and I'm going to hand them out to the folks that I think have interest in the program. Just one clarification, the elevation that I just gave you, it's going to be flipped. So when you look at it, the garage is going to be on the left side. It just accommodates the driveway better because the flag driveway comes in on the left side. I did not have time to ask the, that they be flipped. This is essentially, it's a very pleasing elevation, but it's essentially a ranch house. It's a ranch house with one bonus room on a second floor. I think the configuration basically, you could look at it and think it's going to be five bedrooms. It's not. It's going to be four. One of the, one of the bedrooms on the ground floor is going to become an office with computer, et cetera, that type of thing. The property itself is a little over a half acre, and the size of the home without the porches is approximately three thousand. I think with the porches, it's like thirty-three hundred, yeah, three-three-three-oh with the porches. We do need the various branches of relief that was indicated. You should know that I received a call from one of the neighbors, Jack O'Rourke. He explained that he's in Florida, and Jack lives, he lives on Peconic Bay Boulevard, and the rear of his house butts the south side of this property. And he asked a few questions, all of which I answered, and then he said he has no objection.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. This is a one-story house?
Yeah, it looks two, but it's a one-story, except there's a bonus room on the second floor.
What's the height of the ridge?
I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you. But it certainly, it will certainly meet, it's going to be way below the maximum of the code. I don't have that number.
So the second floor, according to these plans, is going to utilize dormers, which
That's it.
lightens the, the second story look. It's going to have basically the height of a one-story building.
That's correct. But with the exception of the one bonus room, it'll be above the garage.
Right.
And it does have, we are proposing, you know, realistic setbacks relative to the house. And I'm a builder.
I mean, obviously, you're not seeking a height variance, but ideally, if you submit a set of plans, we like to see the height.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed that. But it is a, it is a one-story house.
Yeah. Well, it's very private, if anything.
Yeah, it's, it's a really private, it's a beautiful spot. And this home, like many of the neighbors here, shares the, the right to the private beach across the street. You do have to cross Peconic Bay Boulevard to get to it, but I walked it myself. It's really beautiful, beautiful beach.
Now, the road that goes back to the lot, it's like a rut, two-lane, two ruts, is that the driveway?
Yeah, the driveway in the front. That's correct.
Very homie.
Yeah. And, and this property has an easement right behind, that runs behind it and runs, of course, across Jack O'Rourke's property to get to Peconic Bay Boulevard for the purpose of getting to the beach.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to?
I'll be happy to.
Sure. Go right up. Go ahead. Oh, God. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Helen Horton. I live at five ninety-six Peconic Bay Boulevard. I am, and we, we are all part of the Beach Harbor Civic Homeowners Association, and I happen to be, have the pleasure of being the president of the homeowners association, so I, we, pardon me?
It's a pleasure being tortured.
Well, no, it really is not a torture.
That's good to hear.
It really isn't. No, we're, we're very, we're a very close-knit group, and we all, we know each other, and we check up on each other and take care of each other's dogs and, so, but I, I would just like to ask a few things. Is there a variance from reading this description? Is there a variance for the front of the house?
No, we need the front yard setback.
Okay. So you're not requesting any variance for the front?
No, the front is fifty.
Where does it say that?
I think.
Oh, we, I didn't, we haven't had the chance to see the survey.
It's fifty feet in the front.
Okay, so the front is fifty feet. And, and you're saying you're complying with that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, one other question I have is, we, we just saw the appeal description. We haven't had the opportunity to see the other materials. Where it says the minimum required is fifty-five feet, shouldn't that be fifty?
Say that again, man?
The, the two sides.[1723.12] Where it says the minimum required is 55 feet, shouldn't that be 50?
Say that again, ma'am?
The two sides
Right.
setback should be 25 feet each. And they're requesting 19.2 and 19.8.
Right.
So when it says the minimum required is 55 feet, shouldn't that be 50? Or did I misunderstand this?
So, the minimum is 25, but the, but the minimum combined is 50, so it could be like 25 and, you know?
I think it says 50.
The minimum
It says 55, this is not a big deal, I guess.
She's saying it's maybe incorrect.
I used to be a proofreader, so that's why.
I'm sorry, so
Shouldn't it be 50?
No, the minimum combined side yard is 55 feet, and the minimum side yard is 25. So one side could be 25, and one side could be 30, but the minimum combined is 55.
Right.
Yes, so that's correct.
That's correct.
So her reading is
As per the code.
Right.
Oh, okay, so that 55 feet is correct.
Right, correct.
Okay. And then, can I ask, what is the actual, we're all about a half-acre lot. So what is the actual perimeter of the lot? Is that?
On this, what do you mean the perimeter, ma'am?
The perimeter, meaning the number of linear feet?
It's right on the survey, if you have it in front of you.
Okay, can you please have a copy to study this?
Sure.
Okay.
Actually, there's a reduced copy on the back of each plan.
Oh, okay, and then I was also gonna ask how many square feet, we're all about a half-acre, how many square feet exactly is the vacant lot?
Well, the lot itself is 22,401 square feet.
Okay.
Which is a little over a half acre.
Yeah, I'm just about a half acre too.
Yeah.
So, okay, that is basically what I wanted to ask, all right, if we have this, then we really don't need
I gave you a reduced copy.
Okay, and then I, my home is, happens to be one of the largest ones, I'm 2,500 square feet. So I would be a little concerned for, well, I'm speaking for others too, that they are asking for 3,000 square feet. But that's not for, that doesn't belong under the CBA?
It's really, it's really what the setbacks
Okay, that's what I thought. You've, okay, thank you very much for your time, that's what I wanted to ask. Okay, these are all your papers?
Hey, do you have anyone else to speak? Yes, sir. Go right up to the mic.
He's opening Tuesday.
Do you, Salma, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name, my name is Bert Holden, I live at 586 Peconic Bay Boulevard, on the house, on the lot, on the road, and the one that we're talking about is the flag lot in back of me.
Okay.
Now, the only problem I have is, it's a small lot, building a bigger house, it'll change the character of the neighborhood, and if you wanna build a big house, you buy a big lot. One of the homeowners wanted a big house, he bought three lots, and he built what I consider a mansion. And he's never there, he lives in California.
So what's your name?
And in addition to that, I think it'll just reduce the values of the surrounding houses by having a house that's filled up the whole lot.
What's your name, sir?
Bert Holden.
And where are you living, where is your residence?
586 Peconic Bay Boulevard.
So you're on the
I'm on the road.
You're south of him or north of him? Are you on the corner?
I have a hearing problem.
Are you on the corner? Let me look, let me look at the
No, I'm not on the corner.
I'm on the corner.
You're on the corner.
She's on the corner.
So you're just north
On the front lot.
You're north of his driveway. Take a look.
And his lot is in back of me.
I put the names on the lots.
His lot is in back of me.
Okay.
Okay, go back to the mic, please.
Where are we here? Holden. He's Holden?
He's been waiting.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Holden, you are aware that, that
I have trouble hearing.
Mr. Holden, can you hear me?
Approved.
Can you hear me?
I think so.
You are aware that this is a flag lot, that you can't see it from Peconic Bay Boulevard?
He could see it.
His house backs up on the lot.
I'm sorry?
His house, his back is on the lot.
I realize that, but
My house is on the lot.
His house is behind you, it's a flag lot, that you can't see from Peconic Bay Boulevard.
His house is the flag lot in back of my lot.
In back of your lot, right.
In back of my lot.
Right. In back of your lot, so you don't see it from the road. It's a long driveway, correct?
It's a long driveway, right.
Right, so it's behind your house, right?
Right, it's behind my house.
What's your current view now?
Pardon?
Your current view. What, what, what view, are you concerned about a view being?
No, he's talking about values. I can see the fields in the back.
The field, yeah, but, but this is a lot that's buildable, so, so he has a right to build.
I can see that in the back, there's the fields, you know. I don't know, I just, it's empty spaces in the back.
So you're worried about your rear view?
About that, right, and the value of, by building a large house, it'll, and now mine is a small house, I don't even have a garage.
Well, I think it'll bring the value of your house up.
What is your, what is the square footage of your house?
Pardon?
What is the square footage of your house?
1,500 maybe.
1,500, I mean, do you know that, I mean
That's about right.
Pardon?
That's about right. Mr. Higgins, what is the square footage of the house you're proposing?
3,000.
According to the survey, it's 3,330, including the exterior porches. So I think in round numbers, the house itself is 3,000 square feet.
And it's a ranch.
And it's a ranch, that's correct.
Two-story, it wouldn't
That's correct.
I don't know if my house is 1,500 square
That's all right, sir.
I think it's much smaller. Because, because to me, it's my second home.
From the road in front of your house, can you see this proposed house?
Can I see his?
From, from, if you're standing at where your mailbox is.
Yeah.
Hypothetically, if you're standing where
I can see the fields in the back. The open areas, I can see it.
From the front road, from Peconic Bay Boulevard, you could see behind your house?
I can't wait.
I'm asking you, can you see behind your house from the front road?
Yeah.
Really?
Because mine is a small house.
So this is a ranch house he's proposing?
I'm just saying, mine is a sandbox.
So between, you know, so from Peconic Bay Boulevards, with this long driveway, they would have to see beyond your house, and all of your landscaping, and before they even were able to see this proposed house?
I should be able to see the house blocking my view. I should be able to see that house blocking my view.
Ma'am? My question is, from Peconic Bay Boulevard, from your, from the Okay, you gotta get sworn in, hold on one second.
Do you, Salma, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, or help you got?
Definitely.
Okay, state your name.
I'm Shelley Brown at 610 Peconic Bay Boulevard, and believe it or not, I live in Jamesport. The line must go between his house and my house.
So what I'm, what I'm asking is, is from the bottom of this gentleman's driveway, right? Which is, which is apparently just to the left, or just to the north of
When you say the bottom, do you mean by the street, or by the back?
By Peconic Bay Boulevard, ma'am, from Peconic Bay Boulevard.
You can see that lot from that
Through landscaping and this gentleman's house, you could see, and the fencing, you could see through all of that, and you'll be able to see this proposed house?
He has no fencing, if you're standing in his driveway, you can see probably 10, 15 feet of the empty lot.
I was, I was there today, and I'll be honest with you, it took a lot to find this site. And it is, it is, it is like way back there, okay?
It's way back there, you
I see the homes, I see the homes right on Peconic Bay Boulevard, but through the trees that are along the road, and through the houses, and through the landscaping, and through the fences that are on those properties, I don't know if you could see a one-story house behind these houses on Peconic Bay Boulevard.
You can't, but that will be our view from the back of our houses.
So you're worried about the view in the back of your house?
Completely.
Even though he has a right to build?
Yeah, I just, I'm objecting to the size of the house.
Right. Okay.
That driveway is 200 feet long, so it's 200 feet.
I fall all the time.
Oh, don't fall, please.
No one in our group has a house with 3,000 square feet.
Well, that doesn't make it right or wrong, though, okay?
It doesn't, I agree.
And this house, looking at this colored survey that the gentleman gave up here, there's, there's like one, two, three, four homes that are stacked in front of this lot that we're talking about.
You can't see it from the road.
Can't see it from the road.
There's no way you could see a one-story house from the road through all those homes.
They're school.
They're complaining about what they're seeing out their back window.
They're worried about their back view.
Yes, yes.
But still, these people are looking at this house.
But he, yeah, yeah.
That's not the house.
Yeah.
The house is in the yellow.
Can I see that?
Sure, go right up there.
Sure.
No, you gotta get to the mic, ma'am.
Okay, sure.
It's gotta be on the machine.
The, the design of the house looks absolutely lovely. He's coming into the food. I guess my question is, couldn't, can this house, which absolutely, looks absolutely beautiful, be done according to the current code? Without the setbacks? Can it be reduced, reduced to that?
No, you got 60 feet in the back, ma'am, he's
So a house could be built on, oh, I don't think any of us are objecting to the home, we, welcome to the homeowners association. I mean, we're a great group, you couldn't ask for better neighbors. But could, could this house, the design of this house be scaled down to fit within the code? That's kind of my question.
Which code?
Without the, without the required setbacks?
Combined 55 sides, 60 rear.
With the valid setbacks.
But that's an undersized lot.
Are, are you looking at the survey here, ma'am?
I think, yeah, at the back of your
Mr. Higgins, can you just show the lady your survey there that you showed us?
Let's just look at what I gave you, I think I gave you, look at the bottom of this. I mean, wasn't that a four-lot subdivision? Yes.
And they were all the same-sized lots?
They're all about a half acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little over a half acre.
Subdivision. So this is the survey.
So I don't know what people The colored map that you gave us.
Oh, no, I prepared that just so I would know the names of the neighbors, but you're welcome to keep that.
Yeah, you know, if you could show her this, because it, you know, what it's basically showing is that you're the, you know, you're this little island in the middle of, of a whole bunch of developed properties.
I think what the gentleman is suggesting is, I prepared this so that I would know the names of the folks that might come up. Here's the organic farm, in yellow is the subject lot for my client. And you look at the size of the lots, we're actually about the same size, or maybe a little smaller than, than, but certainly it's all in proportion. Yeah, right there, okay.
See, my lot
Yeah, the back of your lot is adjacent there, so you're right next to O'Rourke.
Right next to O'Rourke.
Okay, okay.
And somewhere in here, the line changes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're in the corner right there. You're the house with the older cars, those old Buicks, right? Or is that the house?
Preparing this gentleman.
How many do we have next to it? Two weeks.
What are you doing, man?
Hold on, he's tonight, will you?
You're the guy that requires all sorts of
Are you talking about a controversial Okay, so
I got you.
What was the result of that conversation?
I mean, I think visually, it's a little easier to appreciate now that all the lots are essentially the same size here.
Yeah, I mean, the lady that was, that was just talking, can you, did you see that? The, the, the survey with the visual?
Yes.
With the color-coordinated lots and all of that? And what is your opinion of that?
Go to the mic.
Well, that
You gotta go to the mic, ma'am.
Yeah, sure.
Please.
We're on TV, stars.
My, my opinion is, basically, what I already said, is that I think this, the design of this house is beautiful. But 3,000 square feet are just over 3,000, 3,000, what was it, 3,300 square feet?
Well, the other ones are porches, it's 3,000 for the house itself.
Yeah, I mean, my house is 2,500, and I think I'm one of the larger ones.
So it's 500 square feet larger than your house?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have a double-car garage?
Yes.
Do you think you'll be able to see it from the road from Peconic Bay Boulevard?
I think they're concerned just about size, just
By the Holden's
How about you, Doris?
To the entrance to their driveway, yes.
That's a long driveway.
That we know of.
Oh, their driveway is, no, his driveway is short.
Will you be able to see Mr. Higgins' property from Peconic Bay Boulevard?
From my house, no.
Well, this is what I'm asking.
Would I be able to see it from my house? Is that what you're asking?
From the front of your house, from the road, from Peconic Bay Boulevard.
Oh, from, from the front of my house?
From Peconic Bay Boulevard, looking at your house, will you be able to see this house behind you?
In front of my house, looking at my house, no.
Right.
Oh, I'm not talking about the view, for me, they're, they're more concerned about the view.
Yeah. This is a flag lot, ma'am.
Yeah, oh, of course, I, sure.
So, and what is the size of your, what is the square footage of your home?
I'm 2,500.
And you border his property?
No, I do not. No, I'm only here as, as a neighbor and president of the homeowners association to say several things, which I've already said.
You border his property, ma'am?
No, I border as a mayhem, finished house.
Does anybody here border his property?
Border, he said.
Border, border.
Yes, she
Does anybody here border his property?
Yeah, this is
You do.
My whole backyard
And what is the square footage of your house?
1,450 feet, according to the state, according to the tax department.
Can I, okay.
And it's a ranch.
So from the front of your house, from Peconic Bay Boulevard, can you see this gentleman's house?
You might be at the end of my driveway, but it's only 10 feet.
It's gonna be pretty hidden, it's gonna be hidden pretty good, right? Right.
If she doesn't see it, she better get a seeing-eye door.
I can see, you're talking about the size and all this, but it's a beautiful house. And it's gonna add to
But you're not gonna see it from Peconic Bay Boulevard, or you're barely gonna see it from Peconic Bay Boulevard, that's the point.
I'm ready to move on then.
Okay.
I'm ready to move.
Since we can't, if we can't conform to the code to put a house in there, they have a right to build. I would like to move this application forward, because the house is out of sight from Peconic Bay Boulevard, it's a 200-foot driveway. And I'm sure that when they finish, this house is gonna be, it's gonna have a nice lawn and things like that, so if you have a rear window that you're looking out, you're not gonna be looking at a destitute property. I mean, it's gonna be brand-new, it's gonna be landscaped.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I like the empty lot.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, unfortunately, you know, we're all entitled to, you know, to buy and build, you know, that's just the way it is, you know? This is still a free country, yeah.
Okay.
I would respectfully request that the application be granted. And, and I think that, if anything, it will increase the value of all the homes. And it's really not gonna be seen from the road, it's fully treed now, and we'll make every effort to keep as many trees as we can to continue that buffer. Mr. Chairman, can we finish this?
Yes. I would like to go and move ahead with this application, I don't want to offend anyone in the audience, we've heard what you've said. I see no reason why we shouldn't. And I hope you'll respect our decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Okay. Who's got this?
I move that the determination of Stephen Hannan, 582 Peconic Bay Boulevard, Aquabob, New York, forbearances and to and from relief from provisions of Chapter 301, Section 17, where the proposed impervious surface coverage is going to be 21.3% of the lot, where the maximum permitted is 15%. Chapter 301, Section 17, where the proposed side yard setbacks are 19.2 feet and 19.8 feet, where the minimum required is 25 feet. The proposed combined side yard is 39 feet, where the minimum required is 55 feet. And the proposed rear yard setback is 53.7 feet, where the minimum is 60 feet. Be approved in accordance with the application and sketches, with amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Excuse me, sir, we're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a vote.
Okay, Mr. Barnes?
Aye.
Ms. Worthington?
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And then
Thank you.
They got you, everybody.
Thank you.
It's done. They're gonna say, huh. Go ahead, go.
See you next call.
What is, what is her name?
Stay focused.
Mrs. Holden?
Stay focused.
Did you say Holden or Horton?
Holden. But anyway, you know, there's a floor plan in here in this, this whole thing?
I don't know, he wants you. Me?
No, no, not you.
I think they got a copy of it.
Oh, they did?
He gave him all copies with the survey.
Okay, unheated, or heated floor plan is twenty-seven, twenty-five, everything else is unheated, so, you know. I wanna thank the board for their-
Due diligence.
Due diligence.
For an amazing evening.
I'll see you on the eighteenth.
No, I'm gonna be in the city filing my tax return.
When are you gonna be out here?
I come out weekends, and I spend the whole summer here.
Well, you say hello to us, will you? Please?
Of course, I plan to eat, uh, what do I like to eat?
Crabs, soft-shell crabs. Fried duck.
I love those shawco crabs.
I knew it. My father loves them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you for building a big house to make these people come here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting.
No, we gotta adopt the minutes.
Oh, okay, we gotta adopt the minutes.
We gotta adopt the minutes for Emily.
Hold it. We gotta hold our vote. We wanna adopt the minutes, Mr. Barnes.
I'll be calling nine-one-one.
Second.
Mr. Barnes, adopting the minutes of the vote now.
I leave you with my famous party.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good one.
Have a good day.
Yes, thank you very much.
Now closing.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the meeting. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye.
All right, well, there we go. There you have it.
Wait, wait till it-
Always a joy.
I wonder how Freddie would have done this tonight.